I'd like to call this meeting, the Town Council, to order for Thursday, December 2nd. Please stand and rise. Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance announcements. Merrimack Town Council would like to express our deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Anthony Tony Pellegrino, who passed away on November 17th at the age of 78 years old. Tony served on the Board of Selectment, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Sewer Master Plan Site Committee, Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee, the Charter Commission, Ethics Committee, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, and the Conservation Commission. He was also one of the original members of the Special Officers on the Merrimack Police Department, served as a Commissioner of the Merrimack Village District for over 26 years, as well as served as a New Hampshire State Rep for six years. Tony selflessly and graciously volunteered countless hours to better the community. He was an unforgettable man with a wonderful sense of humor and will be sorely missed by all. Wonder if we could have a moment of silence for Tony and his family? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, December 16th at 7:00 PM here. And then we start getting into budget season. So Thursday, January 6th will be a budget meeting starting at 6:30. And Wednesday, January 12th, a budget meeting starting at 6:30 here in this room. And then Thursday, January 13th, because we don't have enough meetings, will be a regular meeting starting at 7 o'clock here in the Council Chambers, in the Matthew Thornton Room. Excuse me. Paul, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to first state that tax bills were put in the mail yesterday, so most people should have received them today. If you, if you, yeah. If you do not receive your tax bill by Friday, please call Town Hall Monday. We will, we're available, they're also available on the kiosk, the Town website underneath Property Taxes. So you can go there and see what your tax bills are as well. The Merrimack Parks and Rec Department invites you to join, join them in kicking off the official holiday season by joining them for the 28th Annual Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony, which will take place this Sunday, December 5th. The annual holiday parade starts at 3:00 PM in the Common Shopping Plaza located at 515 Daniel Webster Highway. The parade will kick off and come up Daniel Webster Highway and proceed south to Babuzyk Lake Road and then up into the Town Hall Parking Lot. Immediately following the parade, the tree lighting ceremony. The annual tree lighting ceremony will be held at Epby Griffin Park, located behind Merrimack Town Hall, and it will begin immediately after the parade, approximately 3:45. If anyone has any questions about these two events, please contact Parks and Rec at 603-882-1046. This year, more than ever, the need is great. The townwide food drive continues through December 31st. If possible, please donate your unexpired canned food and other non-perishable items to benefit local food pantries such as St. John Newman and St. James Churches. Other drop-off locations are located at Town Hall, the Merrimack Police Department, Merrimack Fire Department, Highway Maintenance Complex, Transfer Station, and the Library. We'll have all the collection boxes available at the tree lighting ceremony to drop off your donations as well. Single stream operations at the recycling center will see a minor change beginning in later this month. The transfer station will no longer be accepting number three, number six, or number seven plastics in their recycling stream. Please see the Solid Waste website underneath the Public Works Facebook page or under the Town Merrimack's webpage for informational posters at the facility for details in the coming weeks of which plastics are recyclable.
What number are those again? Three, six, and?
Three, six, and seven, and you'll hear more about that tonight when Kyle talks during the tipping fee discussion. Finally, Reeds Across America will be coming to Merrimack, New Hampshire. Barbara, do you want to take that away?
Or Nancy?
Nancy's doing the cemetery. Barbara was doing the Reeds Across America at the Legion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so on September, September, December 13th, thank you Nancy. There's two.
I'm sorry. Be quiet Nancy.
The convoy for Reeds Across America will be stopping at the American Legion Post on Babuzyk Lake Road. And the convoy is en route, as you know, to Arlington National Cemetery. And they have stops along the way, so it'll be about 1:30 in the afternoon on Monday, the 13th. And?
And on Saturday, December 18th, at 12 noon, there will be a Reeds Across America service for all the deceased veterans at Last Rest Cemetery. And I believe that the entrance and access will be locked off just before, so people should probably get there early to be able to have access. We don't want anybody hurt walking around and during that time. So I hope to see everybody the other.
That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Thank you. We have comments from the press and public. Anybody from the press or public wants to address the council at this time, please come up to a mic. You either sit here or go over there, whichever. Just, yeah, just make sure you turn on the mic. You should see a bright green light. Well, toggle it, because it probably turns brighter if you push on the button in front. And pull it a little closer to you, so.
We should have instructions. There you go.
Thank you.
Yes. My name is Bill Fallon, and I've been a resident Merrimack for 25 years. I just have a concern, I don't know if this is the way to do it or not, but all the construction in the south end of town, well, all of the town, concerned because they're building 242 apartments across the street from us. And then down at the Outlet Mall, they're building another big tall apartment building. Plus, literally, in the last two years and two years going forward, you know, almost close to 1,000 condos and homes. So I was just concerned about if there's going to be plans for the Fire Department, another, you know, like the Fire Department would have another ladder truck and another fire station in the south end to accommodate, you know, all the construction.
Okay, this is a time for, for public comment, so we're really not supposed to get into a discussion on it. If we need to bring it up as a discussion, we can agenda it for later. But that's certainly something that we've been taking under advisement as best that we can in the council. The Planning Board and the Zoning Board are in control of setting up and approving numbers of units. And so as far as the density and the quantities of units, that's another set of boards that are doing that. We have been receiving fiscal impact statements from the Planning Board on those units, and we're obviously taking all that impact into effect in our budgeting with respect to the Fire Department and the Police Department and all the city services. So we are looking at that. We've just added individuals to the Fire Department very recently and have plans to, to staff it to 11? 11 full-time, so I think we're, I think we're reacting to those as appropriate.
Okay, that's all. No, I've just been seeing all this construction. I didn't, I didn't know.
We are. We've been seeing it too, believe me.
Well, I'm a computer illiterate. I don't know how to like get all this information, so I couldn't.
Okay, well, I mean, you can, so you can certainly come into the Town Hall and talk to the folks in the Town Manager's Office, or downstairs in the back is the Community Development Department, and they can give you plenty of information on that kind of development work.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, before he leaves, if he could just state his address for the record, so our minute take can put that in the record?
Oh, 12 Merrimack Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll move on. Pass this over. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. We have a recognition of a resignation of a town employee. You guys are just trying to fool me. Submitted by Human Resources Coordinator Sharon Marunich. The Town Council presenting a plaque to Kristin Wardner in recognition of her service after more than 13 years of full-time service with the Town of Merrimack Finance and General Government from May 27 of 2008 to December 2nd, 2021. So today was her last day. Kristin's been working in the Town Manager's Office for quite a few years now, of those 13, and I'm sure she'll be missed. I understand she's moving on to, in RPC. And that'll be to their benefit, because she's a great coordinator and interface. So Kristin will be presenting, Kristin didn't want to show up tonight, so we'll be presenting her with a plaque that is, is typical. But it says, "To Kristin L. Wardner, in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you've contributed for more than 13 years to the Town of Merrimack and the Finance and General Government Departments, your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, May 27, 2008 through December 2nd of 2021, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and Town Manager." So we'll be sure to get that plaque to her and wish her the best in her future endeavors. Thank you, Kristin. Yep. Okay. We have no appointments, public hearing, legislative updates from state reps. I did receive a letter from Maureen Mooney, our rep, and she says, "Greetings, Town Councilors. One, earlier this year, you may recall HB 478 attempted to ensure that St. Obane pay for filtration in wells four and five beyond the year 2025. The Town Council signed a letter in support of HB 478. An identical bill is, I'm assuming it didn't pass. An identical bill is being filed in the State Senate for next year. More to come. Number two, removal of the Exit 10 tolls was included in the budget HB 2, signed by the Governor earlier this year. As a result, toll collection on Exit 10 will cease on January 1 of 2022, and the project to remove the toll mechanisms is advertised for a bid in May of 2022." So no more tolls in Merrimack. That's kind of a date to remember.
Till they put the highway one in.
Until they, yeah, till they move it down there, yeah. Knock on some wood or something, didn't you? Merrimack legislators hosted a press conference last Monday, 11/29/21, to urge the shutdown of St. Obane until it can prove it's no longer emitting PFAS. This comes as a reaction to the recent deficiency letter issued to St. Obane by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The press conference was covered by WMUR, Union Leader, Manchester, Inc., and In-Depth NH. Links are provided, and this will probably be put on our website if you want to check on those things. Thank you for all you do. Respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney, Republican from Merrimack. Do we have any other state reps? I don't see anybody in the audience. You don't have anything from, from Bob, so we'll move on. We have no, well, let's not skip the Town Manager's Report.
It's actually very good this time. The Alliance for Community Media Northeast has awarded Merrimack TV a second-place award for the sports coverage over the, during the pandemic. Merrimack also received a first-place cut for community media promotional videos that we do.
Oh, awesome.
The north, the northeast region includes all New England State plus New York State, so it wasn't just in New Hampshire, it was the whole northeast. So hats off to the media division. The media division would like to thank everybody who did play-by-play and all the volunteers during, for the sports. But it, it just shows a testament to these gentlemen who, who are in the media division and all they do to get the word out there and information out there. So I want to congratulate the media. I asked if we were going to get a.
They're bowing back.
I asked if we were going to get an Emmy or a Tony Award or something. I said, I put that in my office. They said, "No, we'll get a certificate for the second place, and we'll get a, oh, something for, for the first place, a plaque for the first place." But they will be displayed proudly at the Town Hall for a little bit, and then they'll come over and take their rightful place here in the media division.
There you go.
Good. I want to just give you a couple of updates. For anybody who's driven Woodbury Street in the last couple of months, I want to tell you, thank you for your patience. The sidewalk is complete. I want to give a shout-out to Town Engineer Don Tlamawa and the contractor Continental Faving for making this project such a success and speedy. And it was pretty speedy. So I want to thank them. Also, the contractor, our wastewater treatment facility upgrade. The contractor is in the process of installing the concrete foundations for the new emergency generators, installing electrical manholes and duck banks, and completing field verifications of measurements and grades for the primary and secondary clarifiers. Work remains on schedule for this project. So those are some good news that we have here going forward in the month of December, so, thank you.
Very cool. Do we have any questions for the Town Manager's Report? Thank you very much, Paul. I appreciate it. Okay, we have no consent agenda, so we're on track here. Old business, the Merrimack Village District requesting a letter to support, of support to NHDES for well MVD 6, submitted by Town Manager Paul McAlley. The Town Council to receive an update on the brownfields grant funding through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to assist in the remediation plan related to the former Merrimack Industrial Metals Site located at 734 Milford Road that caused adverse impacts contamination to the former MVD production well, MVD 6.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So back in June, on June 10th, the Town Council was presented by MVD for a request to support this grant that New Hampshire DES is seeking, and asked the Town Manager at that time to get more information. Councilor Woods was gracious enough to get me in contact with Jamie, Jamie Emery of GZA. He's basically the Merrimack Village District's, one of their engineers that they use for water and things of that sort. And then Jamie got me in touch with New Hampshire DES. So I had a, I had a meeting with, on Wednesday, November 17th, with, with both Jamie and, and New Hampshire DES to discuss what exactly this grant is. And this grant is a grant for assessment and to develop remediation plans. There's five of them throughout the country. It's a competitive grant that the EPA is giving out. It's a $2 million award, and that's for assessment and remediation plan. It's not going to do the remediation. It's just to say, yes, this site has contamination. It is, it is a brownfield. Here's a remediation plan if you want to move forward on that. I brought up several points during this meeting with New Hampshire DES. One which was that we do not own the property, and what, if any, do we need to do, what the Town Council needed to do. So what, what he said, that if you were included, what they're looking for is to include three properties in the initial grant proposal to the federal government. But it's up to 10 properties. You don't have to list all 10 properties, but it's usually around 10 properties that are, will be, if the grant is awarded, that they will be able to do this remediation with. So I said, "What do you need the Town Council to do?" He said, "Well, first you would have to start the deeding process. You don't have to take over the deed, the property, you just have to start it, basically notifying the, the people who own it that you are looking into taking this over as tax deeding." We, Jamie and myself felt that would not be a huge issue because it appears that the, one of the owners has passed away. The other owners have walked away from the project totally and, and basically cannot be found. So that if we started this process, it wouldn't be somebody coming in and denying the, the deeding process. As well as some other things, you don't have to take the property over to, for them to do the brownfield. You just have to start the process. And then once, if we're included in this grant, once they do the remediation plan, the council has a couple of options. Do nothing, or proceed with a brownfield grant from New Hampshire DES, up to $200,000, to help remediate this situation. Both Jamie and I, at that time when New Hampshire DES said that, we said, "Where, where's the other money going to come from?" And the gentleman said, "Well, I'm not familiar with the project." And we've said, "This has PFOA, this has MBTs, this has diazone, this has, boom, this has that." To get well six, which is in that area, up and running, they would need to do a filtration plant. We'd have to clean this all up. We do not see this as an active site where a business would come in and, because that's the big thing, they want to take, you do the land and they want to bring it and reutilize it in a business or something. It's not in an area where a business would come in back there and take it over. I don't know if the business that sits in front would be interested in taking over the 10-plus acres that sits behind it. So as we talked more and more with New Hampshire DES, he said, "I'm not going to include you in my initial three properties." I said, "Well, that's good." He goes, "I'll keep you on the list for 10, and if fund, if we do have funding and you do want to do it, if we did get the grant and we do have the funding and you do want to do it, just let us know." Personally, I really don't think we need a remediation plan to tell us that that property is contaminated. We have pretty good testing of a well, MVD, because they shut that down, what, in the 80s lawn, I believe?
1984.
1984, because of the contaminants that were in that area. So if they're not going to help us and do it, he said that coming through EPA, they might have more money for things of that sort, coming down the road in a year or two at all. They're all weighing through this infrastructure bill that was passed. So it wasn't the right time for us to join up with them, to put this in. And like I said, it's a competitive grant. There's five throughout the whole country. So i- in each state, so if 50 states go in, they're, 10% is, is basically what they're, what they're saying for this $2 million to come through. So my recommendation is that at this time, we do nothing, so to speak, as, as a town. And we just keep this on, you know, a back burner, on very low heat on the back burner to see what comes out. And then if there's money that EPA is going to give to be able to do these remediations, then we look into it further. Because honestly, $200,000 is not going to get us a lot. It will take us several, several years to get this remediated.
It doesn't make sense to me completely, so I think I might be misunderstanding something. They want to spend $2 million on a remediation plan and only?
For up to 10 properties, so that's about $200,000 apiece.
On a prop, per property, yes.
I did misunderstand that. Very good. Because, and then have $200,000 to remediate, just didn't.
Didn't make any sense.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
I just had a question. Did you have a talk with MVD to explain or what your opinion is?
Jamie knew where we stood at the end of the call, so I was letting him. He even said, "Doesn't make sense for the Town of Merrimack."
Okay.
Right now.
Thank you.
He would love to get well six up because it's one of the best producers they had. Does, doesn't see it in, in the near future.
With this particular?
With, with this, using these, these monies.
Barbara?
Well, I had several questions about this one, and I did a little more poking on the EPA website for this. Because my first question was, was, okay, the well was closed because of contaminants, but, yep. So now, we have all these GAC filters now for MDV, MVD, and won't the GAC filters take care of the water?
I can answer that because Jamie made that part quite clear, because I asked that question to Jamie.
Yeah.
Jamie said that it's different treatment for MBT and benzene and diazone.
Well, I.
Diazone?
I think it's a good question to ask because.
Yeah, number four diazone, yeah.
Only because I'm sure if I was thinking it, other people would be too. So I went poking on the, on the EPA site, and for Merrimack Industrial Metals, it is listed as a brownfield site. There's an ID number for it. And also, it was listed with the tribal and state registries on 12204, and they have their number for that too, for their reference number. And at the time that it was registered, the only action was to contain the plume so that it wouldn't spread anymore. So, but it, the site does say it needs mediation. Also, I thought it was interesting that the owners listed on the EPA site are different from what we have on the GIS map. And there's also a reference to a lawyer in Manchester who is taking care of it.
There, there, what I understood is that there was a, a couple of brownfields with this site. The entrance on, I believe, Boston Post Road, as you come in, left into Connection.
Right, that's where they, they're monitoring well is.
They're monitoring what, but the pie plate, the pie plate shop, the old pie shop. They cleaned that up as part of the entrance going into the PC Connection. So that was part, what I was told was that was the first part that the EPA got involved in to clean that up. The back portion where the buildings were and where the metals and things of that sort, that was never, never cleaned up and never, never done as a brownfield. It was only the upper portion of the lot and that pie plate lot as well.
Well, according to EPA site, that's the monitoring well site that sits right up.
On the, on 101, right.
On the internet, yeah. And the 734-a site, which is on the, which is the EPA numbers I just gave you, is the one that sits behind Connections.
Okay. So, yeah, it was, if it is a brownfield site already and they have a plan, it was news to New Hampshire DES, Jamie, at that time.
We're surprised.
They did do, there was a brownfield that PC Connection, I think, was part of, you know.
But I think they only took over a park for their parking lot.
Correct. That's correct. And so I don't know if that's the one.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the whole details behind it because I think the road goes down. Thank you.
Okay, but it does sound like we're doing the right thing and not doing anything at this point.
Yeah, yes, at this point.
It's just, the costs are prohibitive to get ourselves involved. And the EPA's, or DES is going to go through and put in their grant. There's probably three other sites in the state that are higher priority than ours. And so if we're still on the list, if they should get the grant, we'd still have the opportunity to do the remediation plan.
That is correct.
But there's certainly no reason for us to pursue it anymore at this point. They've even asked us to back off. Nancy Mur.
Thank you. So us not writing a letter of this, of support at this point won't impact, negatively impact the MVD and would still, that would still, we'd still have that opportunity down the road? Should that become necessary?
Yes, that is correct. We, we, we wouldn't even need to write a letter of support for MVD. It would be, the Town of Merrimack is requesting to be part of this for ourselves. The, the reason why MVD wanted a letter of support was because of well six, that the, it's a wellhead protection area that some of this property is. But because we would be the owners of the property, we wouldn't have to write the letter of support. We just asked them to be part of the process that way. But it isn't for cleanup. It was just for a plan. And when I heard it's just for a plan, that's different than what the council was told on June 10th as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? None, we'll move along. Which brings us to, just for clarity, I'd like to move the retreat goals to the end of the agenda just because I think we can discuss that. And I thought we might have some other company here, but not so at the moment. So I'd like to move into new business, number one, social media discussion. The Town Council will be presented with and discuss the possibility of a social media presence being created for the Merrimack Town Council. This was submitted by Media Services Coordinator Nicholas Lavalley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The man of the hour.
Man of the hour. And, and, you know, want to just say, Nick's wearing a tie tonight?
Take a picture.
So, you know, I, I think, I think I deserve that award. But, uh, no, all seriousness, um, at, this is one of the goals that the council was, when we talked in the goal retreat, this was one of the things the council wanted to do. And, uh, I went up to Nick a couple of days after retreat, and I said, hey, Nick, uh, we're looking at a social media presence, what do you think? And Nick was beaming. The next day, he gave me about five-page document. I said, okay, let's condense it. So, uh, basically, Nick is in front of you today to discuss what we're, we're thinking, and, uh, what he's thinking, and, and what we're thinking about a social media presence for the town council. Um, for those people out there, if they really wanted to, there's a couple of social media sites that I was surprised, and I don't know where they are, so we're trying to get those sites back. One is Merrimack Town Hall, and one is Town of Merrimack. So they're already out there on Facebook, but we're trying to grab them as owners because we are the owners of the corporation, so to speak.
Right.
Um, so we're trying to grab those, those names, um, so that we can actually put the content on there. And so that when somebody goes out to Facebook and types in Town of Merrimack, it's not coming up to a different, somebody else's page, it's really, would be our page if the council sees fit. So, Nick's gonna take it away?
Sure.
And give you a quick, uh, overview of what we are thinking.
First and foremost, I wanna thank, uh, the town manager, Paul McCally, for actually tying my tie this evening.
DMI, but thank you.
I am Nicholas LaValle, the Town of Merrimack's Media Services Coordinator. Uh, and, uh, essentially, I'd like to establish and admin a social media presence for the Town of Merrimack and Town Council, uh, beginning with a Facebook page, uh, and eventually reach out to other platforms as well, Twitter, et cetera. Uh, I believe that the town having a stronger online presence would enhance how residents stay informed on town business, events, and notices. And I also see this as an opportunity to provide outreach for residents to become involved, uh, including but not limited to our volunteer and appointed boards and committees. Uh, there's already, uh, several departments that have established so- social media, uh, presence. Uh, this is not to replace those pages. An official Town of Merrimack page would create a hub for these established pages, and also give an opportunity to departments like the tax collector, assessing welfare, et cetera, to have a voice on social media. And what I mean by that is that, you know, there are departments with these, um, social media, um, pages, uh, as you can see on this list here, all of us, uh, most of us have a Facebook presence, uh, some of us have Twitter, uh, my department and the library have a TikTok account, we have a YouTube account, um, and, uh, many of us have had these accounts for nearly a decade. Uh, I envision a town page consisting of two forms of content primarily, which would be curated and original content. And what I mean by curated content, um, that means shared posts, images, and videos from existing social media pages and from the town's website. Um, original content, meaning posts or images or videos that were created specifically for the town's social media page. For example, um, a video that the media division may have created to announce that there's extended hours for car registrations, or an infographic from the town manager's office, uh, relative to setting the tax rate. Posts from, posts of either form should be consistent, and the written voice that I've been using on Merrimack TV's Facebook page has become a trusted source of accurate information. Um, and I'd like to extend those same established, uh, principles and best practices to an official Town of Merrimack social media identity. And I'll show you, give you an example of the differences between the two different posts. Um, this is just, um, this is, this page doesn't exist yet publicly, it's just a placeholder. But the lower, uh, the lower post there with the new fire chief, that's an example of original content. It's just a photo posted directly onto, uh, the proposed Town of Merrimack, New Hampshire Facebook page, that just talks about the town council confirming the appointment of Mark DeFranzio at a meeting, and then a link to watch the meeting in full. And curated content is that, the, the post above that, which is, uh, a post that came from the Parks and Rec Facebook page, that was just shared to this page. So, that's the difference between, um, curated and original content. I feel that the, uh, the various department's social media pages keep residents informed. Uh, Merrimack TV's Facebook page alone has grown from about 500 followers to 2,200 followers over the past year and a half. Collectively, all of our department's Facebook pages combined have the potential reach of over 25,000. Well, and, so all these departments are keeping residents informed, but there's also those other departments that I mentioned that may not necessarily need their own, uh, social media presence. So maybe some of their information has fallen through the cracks, or every now and again, you know, Merrimack TV might post something about, you know, um, car registrations, extending their hours, or something, um, from Pat Murphy in the welfare office. But, um, really, I feel that this information could, should come from a more, uh, official Town of Merrimack presence. But, one of the reasons why I feel that we've been keeping residents informed via social media is because there's been a decline in local press, um, and therefore, local press coverage. So, uh, press is rarely present during municipal meetings. I've worked, uh, in this, um, in, I've, I've been the department head for 17 years with the town. Um, so I remember a time when you'd have a town council meeting, or even a selectman meeting, um, and you'd have local press here. We don't see that nearly as much as we once did, and I think that the shrinking local media is one of the reasons why. Um, and when press does report on Merrimack, they're usually getting their information from Merrimack TV's meeting coverage. The Town of, uh, the Town of Merrimack's social media identity, um, we want that to appear, uh, in users' news feeds. That's, that's, that's the main objective, is to basically put the Town of Merrimack in front of, uh, people's eyes, and so that they're able to see these notifications. It's, it's where residents are, they're all using social media on one platform or another, and that's where they're finding, um, this information. The Town of Merrimack's official page would be accessible, accurate, and regularly in, in, uh, your news feed. And I feel that it would be important, uh, that reactions and comments, um, are possible on this page. Um, the success of the page depends on user engagement. Comments and reactions create a greater chance of a post being delivered to news feeds. If comments were disabled, uh, our posts would be delivered to less news feeds, and in turn, less likely be seen by residents. Um, so the greater number of comments, reactions, or shares by users would significantly increase the reach of our content. And although the Town of Merrimack's social media page should not be considered a public forum, uh, these comments should be welcomed, um, cause in addition to what I had just spoken about, I think encouraging and insightful comments from residents, uh, help decision-making in regards to the services that we provide.
But Nick, remember, comments to our post, they can't post on our page. That's one of the big things, we're not allowing people to post directly on Merrimack, the Merrimack Facebook page. It's only a comment to a post. So if you saw back at the, the 28th annual tree lighting, they could comment about that, oh, it was beautiful, it was, you know, enjoyed the parade, da-da-da. They can't make that post on the page. So there's a difference.
And it probably is for future discussion, but I would have a question is, if there was a comment that had a question to it, would there be a response, and how would we do it, and criteria?
And you just let us right into the next slide.
Ah, a segue.
There, there would be, so, what Paul just explained is completely accurate. Uh, w- we wouldn't want anyone posting to the main feed itself on the page, because we don't want the, if we have a visitor to the page, the first thing we want people to see is the most up-to-date, accurate information posted by, uh-
Official.
An official, whether that's a town manager, myself, or, um, town manager, council liaison, um, or designee, I should say. Um, visitors would not be able to post their content to the page's main, main feed, but they can react, uh, and comment on an existing post. Uh, and then incoming direct messages to the page would receive an automated response with a link to the various town department's contact information. Um, right now, if you were to message Merrimack TV on Facebook, you'd get an automated response with an email and a phone number. Um, it'd be unreasonable to expect that anyone could respond 24/7 directly to a message, and I feel that residents would best be served receiving an automatic response immediately with that contact list, with the different departments, their cu- their phone numbers, and obviously, if this is an emergency, call Merrimack Police Department or dial 911.
Lon, did you have a question or?
Yes, Nick, if we could go back and go to where visitors would, uh, not be able to post, but they can react and comment.
In what fashion or in what medium?
So, if you look at the example that I have here of the original post with the, um, appointing of the fire chief, or the tree lighting ceremony, uh, if, if someone wanted to comment on either of those, they could. They could click or tap comment, and, you know, say how great of a job Matt and Parks and Rec does. Or they can like the post, or, um, react in any way that they want. Um, it's just texts and a response, as they could, they could, they could type something in there, or they could, um, you know, put a link to something, it's-
But if there was a question under that comment?
A question under a comment.
That's when you're saying, an email would be sent, or a text?
If they were to direct message the page.
Okay, but I'm just saying comment.
Just a regular comment.
Under a comment, it's a question. I wonder what, why are they spending all this money on, whatever?
It's, it's really not an official means of contacting any one department.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if it, and-
So would we respond to any questions, I guess is my question?
I, I would say right now, no. We would not.
I agree, I agree.
We, we would look into them, and if somebody does have a, a, a concern, or a comment on something, we'd look at that, and, but we wouldn't be responding back on Facebook. We're not gonna be answering questions on Facebook.
That's part-
This is more to get the word out.
And what happened if there were some inappropriate comments?
Well, Nick's gonna get into that.
Okay, good, okay.
For real, real easy terms, Facebook has, I don't, we've all seen it, we've all had friends on Facebook say, I'm in Facebook jail. Basically, Facebook has, has a set of rules that you have to follow. Somebody can report that post as inappropriate, Facebook will go through and look at it, and say, XYZ, yes, it's inappropriate, they'll take the content off, they'll say, this content has been removed, and that person who posted it would be then put, suspended from using Facebook for X number of hours, days, weeks, depending on the vi- number of violations they have had.
So complaining is not inappropriate?
Right. A complaint is not-
Just to be clear.
Right. But if somebody's using profanity-
Exactly, or, or, or setting an individual. It would be inappropriate for an individual to be debased, a town individual, for example.
Right.
To be debased in a comment section. It's inappropriate.
Right.
But we can't depend upon Facebook to judge that.
That's-
That's my concern.
My next question. But that's, we would have to have a moderator assigned.
Right. Administrator, and that would be probably through Nick, IT Nick.
Right.
Somebody would be the administrator through my office that we'd look at and say, yeah, no, that's, that's not appropriate. You, you cannot berate XYZ individual.
And that's not Facebook's job?
No. But Facebook would be using profanity.
But there has to be a mechanism for us, okay?
Um, visitor limitations are actually noted in the, these, uh, proposed visitor limitations are actually noted in the town's current, uh, terms and conditions of use for social media sites. Um, that document's been used with the administration of the Merrimack TV's Facebook page and all of the others as well. Um, we haven't, the media division, we've never received a complaint from residents on how our social media presence is administered. And I was actually part of the group of department heads that kinda helped drafted that, uh, document back in 2015. Um, we've never had any sort of issue, that's not to say we won't have any issues.
So that's the criteria that you would use?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I've been the admin of Merrimack TV's Facebook page since April of 2011. Uh, I'm authorized admin of pages for the police department, the Department of Public Works, Parks and Rec, and I had established a Facebook presence for the town center committee as well. Um, I already bragged about how many followers we've had, uh, over the past year. Uh, our reach through social media, I feel is a way to connect with the community, and it fills the void left behind from absent local print media. Um, I've led for 17 years the town's media division and the administration of our four cable channels, uh, and I've assisted, um, all of the other, uh, town's social media pages, and that's why I feel as though I'm qualified to lead the initiative. And I thank you for your consideration, and I'd love to open this up for any additional discussion or questions that you have.
Finley?
I didn't know if, uh, I, I think it'll work well. I even, an occasional comment that's not happy about something, I welcome that, we learn from that anyhow. Uh, but I thought a good one to hear about is, did the social media page from Public Works have a lot of, any negative commentary to the point of where somebody might've had to take it down about our rotary? Cause I know there's some people who weren't pleased with it, other people were, you know, so I don't, I don't know if, if you know of any things that might've come about on their page. As far as comments from people coming in, is there anything that was a big deal?
I, I don't, I didn't see necessarily anything as much of a big deal, other than, you know, people just kind of airing their concerns, or, you know, dissatisfaction, and then also plenty of people who were very satisfied with that project. And, part of me thinks is that, you know, it's, even though it's not a public forum per se, um, people are welcome to comment.
That's right.
You know, good, bad, or indifferent.
That's right.
Um, I see most of this as a, as a positive, and, you know, I know that, um, I'm sure Kyle has shown great restraint when seeing negative comments, but the, some of those comments are left there, and they are what they are. Um, I know I, myself and my staff have had some frustration sometimes when we use our social media, because, you know, we'll post a link on how to watch a meeting, and all the different ways you can watch Merrimack TV now, and someone will comment, how do I watch this meeting? You know, so, I'd love to be able to respond, you know, and, and in that case, I, I have responded, but it's really just a copy and paste of the original post.
Here's the rules, yeah.
Um, on how to watch the channel, so.
Kyle, did you wanna comment?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I guess-
Thank you.
Probably the best one to speak about the Public Works page. Uh, we've had that live, gosh, probably eight or nine years now. And, and we went through the gauntlet, uh, town manager, lawyers, you know, to get it up and running, last Public Works director. Uh, it's, it's been a huge success. Uh, and, and the biggest thing, uh, Nick and Paul know that I'm a, I'm an enthusiast about this, and the biggest reason for me, and then I'll get to the question, but, is we, we all get those phone calls that say, I didn't know about this, how come nobody told me? And, and the simple fact is, in this day and age, people don't wanna find the news, they want the news to find them. And this is the single, in my opinion, single best way to do so. So with that said, uh, you know, we do a lot of public stuff, and we spend a lot of the public's money, and we get a lot of comments, uh, good and bad. The good far outweighs the bad. And a lot of the, the less positive comments, they're actually very constructive, and they've shaped the way we've done projects. Uh, that said, the roundabout was probably one of our most controversial ones. And in all the years we've had a Facebook page, for the very first time, I did hide a post, uh, a comment. Never delete, uh, and to your exact point, Nancy, because it targeted an employee of the town. And that's clear in our user policy on the Facebook page, that that's not appropriate. And, and it was for that reason that I hid it. Um, but other than that one comment, in all these years, everything else is still there, anyone can see it through the archives, um, and it's a wild success, so, thank you.
Kyle, you don't filter those comments before they show up? You have to go see it on Facebook and then hide it, or?
Correct.
Okay, so it could be out there for 24 hours or something before anybody notices it, or to hide it?
Yeah, and, and in full disclosure, this one was about me, personally. And I actually left it up for a couple of days, cause I wasn't sure what to do. I always err on the side of transparency, and after a couple of days of mulling- And after a couple of days of mulling it, I finally said, "If this was any of my employees, I would have taken it down immediately."
Good criteria.
So, so that's what I did, but, but I did leave it there for a few days.
All right, but, but technically, defaming a, a person shouldn't be on there at all.
Correct. I should have done it.
Quicker than, than later.
I should have.
You were just more sensitive because of you.
I guess those are the kinds of things I'm still concerned about.
Yes.
At the town level. I mean, I can understand departments, people might not be attacking directly, but the town is a different story. But anyway.
And if I may on the, to just address Nancy's comment on the responding to, to comments. So re- responding to comments, we do sometimes, um, if, if it's appropriate to. Some people are just blowing off steam. You, you let them. Uh, but if it's a true, honest question or someone just looking for info, we'll try and answer as many of those as we can. If we get messages or inbox messages, we, we do have the automatic message, uh, like Nick said, contact us eight to four. Uh, but we always try to respond to every single one of those because it's a direct message to us. It's, I treat it no different as the, uh, the link on our webpage that sends, you know, group, group messages to us. Just for whatever it's worth.
I just think there would be fan lines, I mean, I'm all for it, believe me. I just have a certain amount of concerns. I do think, one, it's a great centralizing place because people would probably look there first and go, "Oh, that, I didn't know Public Works had their own page." So that would probably increase your traffic. But what, and I, and I'm not sure what the answer is. My question is, someone says, "I wonder blah, 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 blah." Well, we can answer that question legitimately and it really is an opportunity to educate the public in response to that question. "I wonder what the town, uh, when the tax, uh, bills are going to be sent out." Usually they're out before. "Why are they so late?" It's reasonable to be able to answer that and say, "By the way, they were mailed out yesterday and they came out later than usual because of the state, blah, 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 blah." The danger in that is you get into the tic and tac to it.
Right, why, why did you answer my question? Why, why'd they answer my question and not their question?
Exactly, so that's the, um, and I'm not sure how you answer that. I think it's appropriate to respond a lot of times. Again, it's an opportunity. But where's that line where, "No, I'm not going to answer that one, but I'm going to answer this one." That maybe that's left up to the people in the offices. I don't know.
If I may, uh, I, that's a great, great question.
I think tonight, I mean-
Yeah, and so, so we've got a lot of experience with this.
Good, great.
What, what happens most of the time in that scenario is, like for the tax rate thing, odds are that would have already been posted on the page or on the website. And nine times out of ten, we don't need to respond to those because someone else who is more informed adds to the comment and says. And I love when they actually link to, to what we already posted. So most of the time, it, it, it's almost self-sustaining.
Okay.
Um, and, and I think you would find that that would be the case.
So active people will say, "You idiot." They can say, "You idiot." We can't say. They can say, "It's our, read what was just posted." It's already been said. We can't say that.
What we're, one of the things that we will achieve, that we've seen this on our page, what Kyle just described, one of the things we will achieve with this, just as all the departments have, this builds community. And that's what we do. That's, that's essentially been a huge part of my job for the past seventeen years. Certainly over the past two years with the pandemic, is we're building community. Um, and what we found with our pages is, what Kyle just described, the community begins answering the other ques- the questions being asked. We've noticed, I've noticed that especially with the Merrimack TV page. And in addition to that, is where the community is answering questions, so many positives have come out of our page itself. People are informed, everything we had just discussed. And then we were able just to meet new people from the community that otherwise wouldn't have found, had we not had a social media presence. We have great play-by-play announcers. We found them because they saw our posts on social media. Had we not had that page, we may not have found them.
Right.
Or maybe we wouldn't have found as talented play-by-play announcers, for sure. So, really that's what we want to do, is we want to continue building community. And this is where so many residents in Merrimack are. So this is a place to easily find them. And what Kyle just said about people really do want the news served to them versus seeking out this information is very true. And, and alongside that, I think consistency of the posts is very important. I've harped on this while we sat in the Town Center Committee, um, meetings with Finley. It's, it, you really want to just keep posts consistent. And what I mentioned to Paul earlier this week was to develop a calendar every month um, that kind of determines in advance, you know, what items would be posted and when. It's, and, and we've been kind of practicing this already in the media division on the Merrimack TV page. We know that there's a council meeting every other Thursday. So there's likely going to be an item that we're going to want to address come Friday morning or Friday afternoon. So we want to plot all those things out in advance. Obviously, you know, things do change or maybe there's an emergency posting or something from the police department we want to share. But we really, on average, we want to post about three times a week. I'd say at least two, maybe up to five. Um, but it's not necessarily just going to be posting for the sake of posting or sharing a link for the sake of sharing a link. Um, we really want to, um, we want to, we want to think smart, smarter, not harder, in terms of how we post this information.
And we're just trying to use this as another tool to get community involvement and the message out there. You know, we, we have the website. People go to our website. We have the news feeds on the website. People can get the news that way. You're dinging. You know, you're in a meeting and all of a sudden you've, somebody's phone dinging. It's like, why, why is your phone dinging? It's, it's always following. There's been a new post on the page or somebody commented on a post that somebody put up. Facebook has really changed the way news and people get their news out and people get acquainted and, and things of that sort. And really, that's what we're looking for. We're not looking to make this a total interactive page where we're going to be answering everybody's question.
Right.
Um, a- and it is true that usually if there's a question, when are we getting our tax bills? Somebody's already seen it, read it, did something and they're going to respond back. The bills are coming out. They're being mailed on November thirtieth. Tax rate seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. He, you know, and they'll respond to that and, and, you know, things of that sort. I was leery of it. I'll be perfectly honest with you. I'm leery of it because of, of the, the negative feedback. Um, what happens if, you know, we've all seen it throughout town, the signs are popping up, you know, about the president. I'm leery about stuff showing up like that on our Facebook page. Cause that's what, it's not intended for that. It's intended to get our news out there and our information out there and be more transparent with the public.
Wouldn't the administrative, that would be one of those things that's unrelated to town.
Right, and we could do something about something of that sort. But, you know, I'm just, those are the things that I'm-
Exactly your good points.
You know, so that's, we, we went through there and I, I sat down with Nick and I said, "Okay, how are we going to do this? How are we going to do this? How are we going to do this?" And, uh, that's why it took, like I said, one, from June to now. We had the retreat in June and I'm bringing it forward six months later is because I wasn't feeling comfortable with some of the stuff going on with it. It's a learning curve. If, if the comments, if we're getting comments and, and they seem to be derogatory or whatever, we can always go in as Facebook administrators and turn comments off. So that would just, you know, news feed kind of deal. But like Nick said, is, it's the shares. It's the replies because you, you got your friends and you got your followers on Facebook. You got people you follow. And they go to a website and it says, you know, uh, X, Y, Z, uh, you know, the best one for me is the happy birthdays. Somebody I'm following will say, "Happy birthday" to one of my classmates from thirty-seven years ago. And I'll respond like, "Oh yeah, happy birthday" because he said it. It came up that it was his birthday today. And that's really how you get the word out throughout town on some of this stuff. The deliberative session, uh, the new fire chief, who he is. So a picture of him. People know we have a new fire chief. He, granted, he has the bugles, he has the badge, so people see that, but, you know.
Still a connection.
It's still a connection with the face. "Hey, hi, yep, congratulations, chief." Kind of deal. We saw you on, on social media, so. That's, that's where we're coming from with this. Um, but yeah, it's not going to be interactive.
It's not, it's not intended to be interactive, that's for sure. Um, it, it's, it's really-
It begs a question of this guy. The person who makes a comment or, or, or questions and, uh, an item um, may or may not want a response, but the person who does want a response, is it just me? Be patient. I'll, I'll probably build a media session while I'm talking, but, um, who is the person in the government, person in the department that's going to, um-
Be the abbot?
You know.
Moderator?
Be the censor. Excuse me. I know it sounds negative, but it's not. But who's going to decide, "Yeah, we need to comment on it." We need to get back to Woods on his comment and tirade and rant and question. Who's going to do that?
Whoever the administrator is.
I feel it'd be whoever the administrator is. I'm, I'm proposing that I establish and admin this presence for the town. And I think what we've discussed tonight is, we don't necessarily owe a user an answer or a response. And as Kyle had stepped up to mention, that the community in department pages, um, in our experience with the different departments, the community tends to answer those questions, especially once they get used to this. Um, especially when it's things that already have been posted, that we've already informed the public on, but maybe you missed it three posts back. There've, there's been times when I have responded on the Merrimack TV page, you know, "When can I see the holiday concert?" or, you know, "Are you guys covering the football game this weekend?" Quick response, doesn't take too much time. Um, if that does ever become an issue, um, if it's just too much, I, I, I think that it, it, that folks visiting the page should have a reasonable expectation of whether or not some things can or can't be answered. And if they do send a direct message, again, they'd get a-
And if Nick, and if somebody does ask the question?
That builds over time in terms of the sense of community you're building and what someone might or might not expect or, um, think they're going to get a response to, and it works.
Yes, I've found that as well.
And if there is something that is pressing and, and, you know, I don't catch the feed right away the next day or something and Nick does, he's bringing it to me. And then we can make, I can make the determination as town manager, how I want to proceed with this gentleman and answer this question.
Could you have more than one administrator?
Yes, we, we can have an admin, what is it, Nick? Administrator and then what?
You should be one of them.
Can have as many administrators, yeah.
As you want on it, yes. People who can provide content.
Finley?
Yeah, I, we're not really reinventing the wheel here because we've got a few wheels already set up and they seem to have worked quite handsomely. I can tell Kyle really loves it, um, and, uh, I'm a believer in it as a, as a form of communication because we've, we've set it at our goal setting, uh, on more than just this most recent occasion, that getting the word out is very difficult. I see this as a, as a slam dunk for me. I'm all in. And, um, and I, I don't mind the comments complaining about a rotary.
I don't either.
I, I think those type of things can be beneficial for us to, to pay attention to anyhow, so, uh, so I'm supportive. And, um, okay.
Nancy, did you-
My comments have not been because of non-support.
I, I get that. I know.
Nancy Murphy?
Oh, thank you. Um, I think it's a great idea and, uh, you know, although I have two thoughts. Um, one, in reference to what Paul said, if the, sort of the mission statement of why, you know, this is, this is going to happen, is community building, that would automatically preclude those things that would be inappropriate to be on there. So it's sort of the, the, um, if the goal is to build community, anything that doesn't do that would certainly be, um, you know, would make not, no sense for the, for that to be, um, to be there. The only question I had was on the, the slide that you had, that third bullet. Um, it was around visitors, um, wait, nope, the other one, yes. On the third one, it says, "It would be unreasonable to expect twenty-four seven responses." So in a way, I feel like that may just, um, suggest that maybe you won't get a response today, but you, it may be suggestive that an ex- but, uh, a, a response can be expected rather than, um, what I think we're trying to say, is that not everything will be answered. Not, you know, I mean, certainly generic kind of things, but, uh, there's a chance that this might be a place where people have, um, the ability to post a comment related to whatever it is, about a personal situation, you know, like with their, somebody's, somebody's own taxes or something. What the goal would be, I guess, would be to have the contact list of the tax collector department or whatever. I just don't know if people might read that and say, "Well, if, if that information right here is available to, to residents, does that, would that lead them to believe that if you post a comment on there, you will get a response?" You know, is it like the guarantee, but just not quickly? Because, I don't know, it's that first line, twenty-four seven responses rather than-
I think I was trying to stress that, um, you know, there's not necessarily someone standing by twenty-four seven to answer a question in a direct message. But at the very least, you would receive a contact list of, of someone to reach to find an answer to that question. I think that's the point I was, that's the point I was trying to make there.
And that's specifically for direct messages, not necessarily for comments that are put on and that include questions?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying though, but if it was a comment and not a direct, not, not a direct message.
Yeah.
If it was a comment and it was a question that probably should have been direct messaged, they're not going to necessarily get that, right? They're not going to necessarily get the contact list. So that's what I'm saying, that it might then be a situation where somebody then says, "I posted such and such a thing on and I asked for whatever and you didn't respond." You may not respond in twenty, "I didn't expect you to respond, you know, in one day, but it's been three days or something." You know what I mean? I, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to think of a way to make it clear that not all, even if you comment a question, it doesn't necessarily mean it will be answered, um, on that, you know, in response to, to that particular comment on the, on that page.
Right. You, you may not receive, if you comment a question, you may not receive an answer.
Okay, that's, that's the-
Or the, or the comment might be back to them, "Please contact town manager's office, da, 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 to discuss further." Yeah, that, right, but that is for a direct message and if you, Nancy, if you're speaking to bullet three here specifically, it does say for direct messages, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's expanded it to say if they comment and include a question there. And then somebody does have to respond to say, "Please contact the town manager's office" or something like that. Because I, I would agree, there's going to be somebody that'll come back in three days and say, "You never answered my question." And then we'll have a whole thread, eight lines long, that's, you know, constantly saying, "You never answered my question." And, and it constantly gets popped up to the top.
But, but I think that with some of these, if, you know, like I said, we'll be looking through some of the questions. Some of the questions might be answered through people.
Is your mic, I'm sorry. Some, some of the questions might be answered through other, other users of the group. But on some of these occasions where it might be po- it might be that somebody needs to go in there and say, "Please contact tax collector, da, 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 da." Or "Please contact town manager's office," or "Please contact TPW," or "Please contact the police department directly with your question for an answer to this question." That, then they're going to, then the message is going to get out there to other people saying, "All right, wait a second, you know, I should be, if I have a direct question, I should be contacting town. This isn't the forum to get my questions answered." Uh, from the town. They can get their questions answered by other users, but not from the town.
It's another place to, to find information and have information fed to you in your, you know, in your newsfeed.
Barbara, do you have a question?
Uh, actually, I don't have a question, just some comments, building off of what Kyle had said earlier. I'm going to be very honest with you. Um, most people in this town do not know that there is a town website. They do not know that they can go there and look at the different departments and look at information or even, like I say, that department listings list, you know, exist. So I think this is a good idea. So I think this is a good idea to do that and I help with communications for a couple of the groups I belong to, so the more people that, you know, see it online and, and actually connect or belong to that group, the better off you are. Also, a lot of the groups have caveats and rules posted on their webpage. If you ever look at the Positive Merrimack Forum, they tell you flat out, this is, if you post any of this, it's out of here. Um, and I'm sure we can, whatever the group is that sets this up can do the same thing. Here are the by, bylaws of participating on this group. No name-calling, no da-da-da. And if you, you, you'll get an answer when you get the answer. And we don't work on weekends and nights. So don't expect the night shift to answer it for you. Um, and I think all of that can be set up and explained very nicely. And if you do have a real serious question, send the message.
Our terms of, our terms and conditions of use of social media is on our department pages. It's listed on there. And you'll find that some of, even some of the things that were mentioned tonight are included in that.
Can you bring that up?
I actually don't have it on this machine here.
You don't have Facebook on the machine?
You got it. You're right. Thanks for being here, Kyle.
He's here just for you tonight.
Think you have all that to full screen?
Uh-huh. If you click on our about section. About Merrimack TV. This section here, this is all of our terms and conditions that were drafted by the town in 2015. So some of the things that we had discussed this evening in terms of vulgarity, the use of obscene, vulgar, offensive, discriminatory, threatening or harassing language in postings is prohibited. And specifically postings that target or disparage any person of, et cetera. Um, postings complaining about employees or officials of the town of Merrimack will be removed from the site and forwarded to the relevant board, commission, or department for appropriate action. Um, and there's several other things that we have already talked about. The town of Merrimack's social media sites are not public forums. Persons may be banned or blocked from posting at any time, violating these terms and conditions of use. I can confidently say, um, since April 2011 administering the Merrimack TV page, we've never had to do that.
It's nice history to have. To be able to
It is. I would say that I think Merrimack TV is probably one of the less controversial departments in town.
Sure.
But, um, and, and so I would hope that's true.
But I believe the police as well.
And, and hopefully everybody has something this or something very similar to it and, um,
We, each department should.
Okay. Do we also have a social media policy and procedures that apply to us as the different departments? Just how we, um, interact with social media and stuff like that?
Yes, we do, and actually we're, um, that's one of my, uh, to-dos is to, because a lot of stuff has changed since
Over the years.
Over the years. So we're looking, uh, we're actually, we talked to the attorney the last couple of weeks to get us some other communities that have social media policies to compare what they have versus what we have and see if anything on our policy needs to be changed. But yes, we do have usage policies on, uh, as part of the personnel policy.
Okay. One, one thing I just want to touch on too, well, you know, why we do welcome and encourage comments. Not only does it create engagement, which leads to more visibility for our, our posts and the information we want to get out to the public. It says in our policy that users are welcome to post content that include, you know, photographs and videos to a town Merrimack site where that allows and where it's encouraged. Meaning under a post, but not to the main feed.
So in their comments?
What, okay. So do we put anything in there that suggests that the comments have to pertain to the, to the original posting? I mean, I, I guess my okay. My, my concern or my fear or whatever you want to call it, is that we get into these long comment threads that suddenly start to deviate away. Much like some of the past forums have done. Uh, where they just use the fact that you commented on so-and-so retiring and then end up, you know, talking about how they don't like the way waste management is handled, or they don't like, you know, the roads or something like that. And, and a, a town centralized site, that might bring out a lot more comments, especially about tax rates or revaluations or any of the various things that create a lot of angst amongst people.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm more than happy to go ahead and, and go on with this, but I think in a trial basis, in my mind, we'd want to observe it and watch it and see how it's going and make sure that it doesn't get out of hand and become a, another negative forum somehow. And that's probably saying that because I'm just not familiar enough with how the different departments have been handling it at this point, but, uh, it, it just makes me a little nervous. Do anybody else have any questions or comments?
The only thing that I additionally is I, I think there should be some redundancy in terms of administration.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, Nick, and probably you, and maybe it does signate, maybe one of the executive secretaries, I mean, it has to be a, a small number. But I think that enough that the burden doesn't fall on one person. Between two or three people, you're able to monitor like you're talking about.
There'll be a couple administrators, uh, probably information technology, probably Nick. And then there'll be three to five content providers. So you can have people who can provide content to the site, website, to, to post postings and things like that.
Postings that happen in the town.
But the administrator would be IT and, uh,
Monitoring, okay.
Yeah, those, those would be where they are, myself, there would be three administrators.
You don't want to do it, huh, Paul?
To be honest with you, I would, I would be the administrator, it's just one of those things that IT and, and Nick are, are
I agree.
A lot more involved in, in up-to-date.
If there's an issue, you can contact them.
And they can contact me very quickly.
Easily reached.
And they know, they're just, if there's a problem, give me a call right away and we'll, we'll resolve it.
I, I would only have one, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't want too many cooks in the kitchen in terms of who's posting when, because like I said earlier, consistency is important. It, it definitely makes a lot of sense to have redundancy, especially in the absence of someone. Um, or, you know, for whatever reason. Um, it's one of the reasons why I admin the police department page or the Parks and, uh, Parks and Rec or DPW page. It's just some, uh, an extra set of eyes and hands to fall back on. Um, and, uh, and, and, and actually with that, um, you know, with having a, a, a centralized town presence, um, it also opens up the possibility for more cross-postings to happen. So if we create a video, um, you know, Colin's been producing these Merrimack moments that spotlight community events and, and people in the community and the Merrimack in motion videos. Um, if we post something and it's a cross-posted video, that means that an admin from the fire department page will, they'll have that show up in their feed, you have a new video, you may cross-post. Now they can take that piece of content and share it as if it were their own. Um, and that will put more eyes on the video, it'll bring up the viewer count, and now you have all of the fire department's followers in addition to the centralized town page now sharing this content. It's going to be seen by more people. Both pages and both, you know, views are going to grow exponentially.
Bud?
Yeah, um, I really appreciate Kyle's comment about, um, taking the news to people rather than them coming, going searching for it. Calmed me down quite a bit. So when and if we move forward, when we move forward temporarily, not whatever, we're going to be the ones that initially are going to be controlling the content on the page, the town.
The town.
So yeah, I'm comfortable with that, if we put it out there, we probably want to comment or
Here.
Should accept what comes back as long as it's done in the proper fashion. Thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with it. What's our, our next step at this point, Paul? Do you?
Um, allow us to develop a, a social media presence for the town. And if you want to give it, uh, till July 1st to come back with an update of, of what was going on with it, we'll be good with that. But, uh, the motion would be, uh, for, uh, the town manager to develop a social media presence for the town council in the town of Merrimack. Um, at what point, uh, July 1st, uh, in the month of July, to come back with an update of, of the traffic and, uh, comments.
Wonderfully stated motions, so, so.
So moved.
Motion made by Did you, did you move it or did Barbara move it?
Whoever, whoever you'd like.
Motion made by Barbara? Seconded by Nancy Murphy?
Well, it was better, very well stated.
It was, I, how you
To, uh, to ask the town manager to set up and start a social media presence for the town of Merrimack slash town council. In coordination with Nick LaBalle.
And to report back.
And to report back to the town council sometime in June or July on progress and, and activity. Pardon?
You put the town council in the motion?
I just did.
Yeah, I did.
He, he had said the town of Merrimack and town council.
Do we want to be there?
Do we want to do this?
I'm just asking the council.
Well, the motion's made and seconded, so we can discuss it. What's your question?
Oh, they haven't been seconded yet?
It has been seconded.
Yeah.
By, by Nancy Murphy.
What part of it disturb you, or questions?
That was your motion.
A basic concern about yeah, I'm concerned about a, um, including the town council in the motion. I thought the page was going to be for the town of Merrimack.
Yes.
Because I think if I think if you expand it that way, you're asking for a lot of trouble.
Understood what you're saying, but there are a lot of times that, um, in these meetings, such as the legislative update, was, uh, said, okay, put on, could you put that on the page now? So it's, it's not just coming from me. This page is not just mine. It's all of ours.
It's our method of communication as well.
It's all of our method of communication, and that's why we included town council in there. I'm not suggesting that you administer the page or you, you put content on, but it's, it's our message that's going out. And when I say our message, it's the town manager's message and the town council's message on the page.
I think it brings up a very good point, however. That if any one of us want to be able to have something on it, it should either go through the chair or the town manager, because we can't have seven people calling Nick.
Right.
No, it should be, it comes from our decision-making as a board, we're not individuals.
That's right.
We might
But we don't have any act, any authority as an administrator. So it has to be a town council decision.
Yeah.
As I pointed out.
So I'm not sure if that has to be memorialized anywhere, or is it just an understanding?
I think it's an understanding of how the town council operates, and I tried to make that understanding clear recently. And hopefully everybody got that email that I sent out. That none of us operates individually, we operate as a council.
Right.
Okay?
I think the fear of listening to the townspeople about something, a decision we've made, is, it's not a bad thing. It's, you know, if it's negative, we should know about it. And so I don't, I don't think that we'll see that much, I think people, you know, if you have a page you throw come out at the last second at a budget, public hearing, then it could be a problem. But if you, you know, if we're just doing the town's business, people know what's happening, they hear about it, they learn. And, um, and I don't, I, I, I don't worry about it myself, I, I, I think it's good to know what's happening, uh, from all avenues.
Okay. Barbara?
And I would just say if, if the administrators notice that something is going terribly wrong, don't wait until July. Let us know.
I've never been shy.
Because
Better not.
We may want to reconsider something or whatever is going on and, and even if necessary, pull it down. But, you know,
Well, and there are some members on this council that are Facebook savvy enough to be able to follow it as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Myself, not included, but, uh, so I, I'm trusting that it will be, uh, at least cursorily monitored, monitored by other people. Is that all right with you, or are you gonna?
Is there clarification you need?
Yeah, I think Nancy clarified it very well for me, thanks Nancy.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's no other comments or discussions on the item, we'll call for a motion, a vote on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes
Six.
Six, zero, one. Who's not here? Andy Hunter. I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting, Andy Hunter is not here, he's out of town. Um, sorry, uh, so he's excused from the meeting. We talked about it, I just never mentioned it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. And good luck. With all of those different pages.
Careful what you ask for.
And I, I, I'm, I'm kind of assuming that this page will be kind of a, an overhead page that can then feed and link, cross-link back and forth to all the other pages.
That's exactly what it is, and I'm not going to sit back down for too long. Um, but there is one thing I did want to mention, because Paul and I talked about it quite a bit this afternoon, which is, uh, you know, there are people that we've discussed this, they don't know that the town website exists, but they are on Facebook. One of the things that we want to do is post meeting, municipal meetings as Facebook events. Um, one of the things that, uh, that people miss about Merrimack TV's meeting coverage not being on Facebook was they'd get notified when a meeting was happening. So just a simple thing such as taking things off the existing town calendar that's posted on our website, making conservation, town council planning board meetings as events on Facebook. People can RSVP, and then when the meeting's happening, they'll be notified the meeting's happening. Then they can either show up in person in public, or they'll know how to watch it, because all the ways to watch Merrimack TV will be listed on that event page. Um, so there's so many positives to come from this. Um, again, we've administered these pages for, for ten, at least 10 years now, between all the different departments. We haven't seen any major issues or concerns. People do want information served to them. Department heads like Kyle and myself were eager to give people information and truly build community through media. That's what my career has been, and thanks for allowing me to work with Paul and make this happen, I appreciate it.
To answer the question, I described it as Nick, as a bicycle wheel. We have a spoke in the middle, and then you have all the spokes coming out it. So the town of Merrimack's page would be the middle. The other spokes out of it would be all the other departments. So it's a two-way street, they can feed there, we can feed back, so yes. We'd be pushing content out, and then we'd be receiving content from the other towns' Facebook pages as well. So that's, that's how I envisioned it, that's how we, we envisioned it.
That would be a very good paradigm, paradigm logo.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to, uh,
That's right.
Number two, under new business tipping fees discussion, submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox of the town council to be presented with the new tipping rates proposal for the Merrimack transfer station as it relates to the new contracts for trash, construction materials, and recycling.
Yes, I'll just give you a quick overview on this. Um, this is my first time in, in 17 years in, in the town where our trash tipping fees have been broken out into three separate contracts. Um, usually we would have, uh, in the last couple of years, we'd have a recycling contract, then we'd have a trash contract to include construction debris. Over the last couple of years, the business has changed. Um, New Hampshire DES, from what I understand, is not handing out any more landfill permits. So land, uh, land is becoming of the utmost when, uh, dealing with trash. Uh, we send our trash up to, um, Pembroke, which is a, uh, they, it's a, for lack of a better term, it's a burn facility where they burn our household trash. Um, then we would send our construction trash to another location, meaning two-by-four shingles, things of that sort, insulation, and they bury that. So all of a sudden, we got all these different rates. So all of a sudden, we got all these different rates, tipping rates for the town by tonnage, with all these different contracts. Recycling's one tipping rate, regular household trash is another tipping rate, and then, uh, construction debris is another tipping rate. Since we just signed these new deals, I believe, um, the recycling is a three-year deal? Is it a three-year deal? Five-year deal? Construction is a three-year deal, and trash removal, the regular household trash is a five-year deal. So with all of this, we, we looked at where do we standing going into budget season? The reason why we're bringing it forward in December is because our new trash contract starts in December. Our new recycling contract will start in January, February, and our new construction debris contract starts in December. So we thought of, it would be of the utmost for the council to hear what, what Kyle's proposing, what we're proposing for the new tipping rates.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, Kyle, thanks.
Good evening, town council. As Paul mentioned, we have, uh, three brand-new contracts for, for, uh, for our biggest commodities that we run through our transfer station, which is trash, demolition material, and recyclables. Um, I'll start with the, the trash first. Uh, we have a five-year contract with Waste Inc. As Paul said, our, our trash waste goes to Pembroke, New Hampshire, and it's a waste-to-energy plant. So everything we bring there gets burned and turned into energy, and we kind of like that. The, the contract year one, which starts December fifteenth, is seventy-eight dollars per ton for the tipping fee. And by the time we get to the final year, which is, uh, starts December twenty twenty-five, it's eighty-eight, uh, eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents a ton. That's just a tipping fee rate. That doesn't include the manpower, the equipment, um, to get the trash there. Our operators haul all of that. They load it into the, um, trash trailers and, and bring it there each and every day. Tom, from the finance department, calculated an overhead rate for us for that effort. And this, you'll hear the same rate for both our construction and demolition and our trash rate. Uh, but that adds an additional sixty-three dollars per ton to, to, to come up with the total cost to, to handle those wastes. So for our, um, so for our commercial trash, so we don't charge for outside of the, uh, the, what's included in the tax rate for residential trash. If we add a commercial hauler bring trash in, uh, we do charge them for that. And our current rate is a hundred twenty-two dollars per ton, which is a seventy-one fifty, seventy-one dollar and fifty cent tipping fee and about a fifty-dollar overhead rate, uh, the last time that was calculated. What we're proposing for trash, uh, commercial trash, is a rate of a hundred fifty dollars per ton, which kind of takes the middle of the five-year contract and the sixty-three-dollar overhead cost. And we broke it down to the nearest half penny, which is seven, uh, seven, seven and a half cents a pound, which works out to a hundred fifty dollars per ton. So it's about a twenty-eight-dollar increase per ton over our current fee. I don't know if you want me to talk about all three or take each one individually.
Well, I, huh? Go ahead. Do you have a question?
No, I was gonna have them all.
Oh, no, I'd like to ask some questions, if, if you don't mind. The, the overhead rate has me very concerned, and I'm trying to understand that. But I also, um, a little surprised that we talk about everything by the ton, and then we talk about the cost per pound, which is the two thousand X difference. And so rounding it to the nearest half penny makes a significant difference when you, when you round it up from there. And so the average, when I calculated, it came out to seven point three one four cents.
Exactly right.
Which, and, and which comes down to a hundred and forty-six dollars a ton instead of a hundred and fifty.
Yep, that's correct.
And, and so I'm wondering why we're adding in the extra almost four dollars a ton upfront because we're rounding out. Why don't we just use it as the hundred and forty-six or even a hundred and forty-seven number? But that's assuming everybody buys into the overhead rate, and I'd like to understand those numbers a little better as well. And I don't, there's no breakout here. So there's one called CRF deposits, and, um, there's other called general operations and wages and benefits. I understand fuel and probably wages and benefits, because those are not, those are incremental costs. They're gonna cost more if you're, if you're hauling more. But, uh, I, I have always questioned whether or not we should be dividing out, uh, the, the capital reserve fund deposits and then charging that across the people that are, we have to service, which is the residents, and then adding that, in fact, again, uh, on anybody that we charge money to. So it sounds to me like we're double-dipping personally, and maybe that's just my understanding of finance. That's, that's out of whack. But, um, it always concerns me when we come up with this and, and we end up with these unreasonably high numbers that other people don't charge that much, uh, or maybe they do. But if we, if we went back and we said we got no commercial brought into the, the town of Merrimack, we would still have to be operating the transfer station. We would still have to be putting money into the CRF. Uh, we'd still have, uh, general operations and supervisions. So those are all fixed costs that I don't think are part of the incremental cost of bringing in an additional ton of commercial waste. And, and so I, I guess I'm asking for better clarification of whether that sixty-three-dollar number is, is appropriate to add on as a charge for anybody that brings in an additional ton of commercial. And if, when you look at it as an additional ton, it's not very much, and it's, it's incremental. And I realize if they brought in another thousand tons, it, it might require us to buy another trailer or, or something where we'd have to do capital reserve fund deposits or something like that. But, uh, i- is this fifteen-dollar-a-ton number gonna add up to one more trailer if we bring in another hundred thousand tons, you know, another thousand tons or something like that? Or is it beyond that? Because it's really spread out across the entire operation, and we're adding all of that on to the commercial deliveries.
Kyle, how much do we bring in for commercial tonnage? Do you have that number? While you're looking for that number, I can explain what we did. So we basically run about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into capital reserve funds. What we did is we took the overall total tonnage number that we do operate with the transfer station, and I believe it was around eighty-five hundred tons per year. And we took the hundred and twenty-five and divided it by the eighty-five hundred ton, tons. And that's where we come up with the fifteen dollars and forty-two cents per ton. calculation there. The fuel cost, as you said, is that. Equipment repairs was basically the same thing. Most, uh, but let me go back to capital reserve. Most of the equipment we're buying is for the trash hauling business. Yeah, we have a skid steer or a couple of skid steers in the recycling, but those aren't the big-ticket items. The tractors, the trailers, the equipment that we have to buy is mostly because of our trash hauling business that we have. So that's why we decided to take the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars divided by the eighty-five hundred tons. And this is something that we've been doing for, for, when I started to do this calculation. And I know when we first did this, we had depreciation and everything else. So we, we've really scaled this down a lot, um, to just including the capital reserve funds for the tonnage, because when we were looking at this, it's not so much that it's that extra thousand pounds, extra thousand tons that we might get from the commercial haulers. It's, that's how much divided by the whole, the whole total of the hundred and twenty-five versus the whole total of the tonnage that we get. So really, in the tax rate, the taxpayers would be paying, for every ton we take out, the taxpayers are paying this fifteen dollars and forty-two cents that the town's covering in the tax rate. Does that make sense?
It lost me there, but.
Because.
Every, every ton you take out?
Every ton that we dispose of, not take out, every ton we dispose of is being calculated at fifteen dollars and forty-two cents for the equipment, replacing this equipment. So what's happening is that some of that money, if it's, Kyle, do you have that number?
So which number did you want?
The commercial haul.
Commercial trash?
Commercial trash.
So commercial trash is about six hundred, uh, five hundred and fifty ton a year out of sixty-six hundred ton.
Out of sixty-six hundred.
Total trash is about sixty-six hundred.
There's a big number difference here.
There is, yep. So it's about eight or nine percent of our trash is commercial.
And then we have the other tonnage. It's, we've been calculating, what, eighty-five hundred tons a year, right?
Eighty-one hundred ton.
Eighty-one hundred.
So sixty-six hundred tons for trash, fifteen hundred tons for construction and demolition.
Is that all commercial, or is that residential?
Uh, some's commercial and some is residential.
The C and D, you can't split that out?
Yeah, so I do have that split out as well. So C and D, um, to date this year, which is through November, we have almost a thousand ton of residential, which is loads less than a thousand pounds, and about, uh, five hundred and ten tons of commercial. So the residential is two to one over the commercial.
Right. But, but our, our station there and our requirement to do, to do trash removal and stuff is a, is a requirement for the residences, right? So we have a fixed cost in just having that there. Then if we can bring in commercial and take in funding from that, that's, that's gravy, in my opinion, once you've paid the incremental cost of dealing with that extra thousand, extra ton that you bring in. And so if we're charging them, charging our expenses across the whole thing, including all of the commercial, we're actually deflating, uh, I'm not sure exactly what. There's some confusion in my mind as to whether or not we're reaching the right number there. And I don't know that I'm gonna be able to get a clear picture.
It's a great question, and one that Paul and I have talked a lot about. It's because we don't, you know, we don't do pay-as-you-throw. We all remember that fiasco. We don't charge for everything that comes in and out of the station. So at some point, there's some, somebody subsidizing somebody else, because we charge for some, we don't for others. And, and what that balance is, uh, I guess I'll leave that up to you folks. I made a recommendation. But ultimately, um, you know, whatever, whatever you guys think is the right number is the number we'll go with. And, and, and I can't stand before you and say, my number is definitively the correct way to go, because there's a lot of ways to think about it, as, as you expressed.
Tom, are you suggest, are you concerned that the commercial haulers are paying, are dub, being double-dipped? Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay, but they're also making a profit from, that's part of their business. And that tipping fee, I'm sure, is deductible in terms of overage, their, their own. But it's not like we're getting rid of our personal, I'm not making money on getting rid of my trash. They are, and I don't begrudge them that. They're making money.
They're making money, but they're also taking it out of the, the Merrimack residence tip, stream. Most of them are picking up trash from Merrimack residents.
But they're making money on the transporting of it. The haulers.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
They're charging people to make money on it, yeah.
Which is fine. I don't begrudge anybody that. God bless them. But they may not be coming just from Merrimack, by the way.
No, no.
They are.
No, it's one hundred percent Merrimack. If they bring something, if they bring something from.
Supposed to, is one thing.
Well, supposed to. If they, if we find, if they dump on the, the floor, and we have done this. Steve Dumas used to do this, and Ron can attest to this. Steve Dumas used to go in there sometimes and open up a couple of bags, and if he saw a bag from Anheuser or he saw a, a, you know, somebody's envelope from Milford or whatever, he would call the hauler up and say, hey, no more, because if we catch you again, you're not, you're not dumping here. So they, they, I don't, this is what Steve Dumas used to do, and I believe that's what Chris does too, is every now and then they'll go and open up a couple of these bags. They know that they're only supposed to be taking trash from, from the town of Merrimack. I, I understand your point. I really do. I, I.
But theoretically, they're making money.
No, and I.
It doesn't matter that they're making money. The, the trash they're picking up from Merrimack residents has already been paid for by that Merrimack resident if they brought it themselves. So, you know, they, that tonnage is already paid for, the opportunity to have that trash dumped in Merrimack. I have no problem with charging them for our cost of getting rid of it, where we're not charging myself to bring stuff down, because I've already paid for it in my taxes, and I'm bringing it down. And I'm not making a profit off of it.
Correct.
So the people that are making a profit should have to pay the cost of getting rid of it. But should they pay an additional cost, should we be making money off of them? Making money off of the town residents, I guess, is where I'm concerned.
I see your point, and, and it's a valid point when, when you break it down like that. But it's a choice of those residents not to put that trash can in their car and to have, roll it out to the end of the driveway to do it. But I do see your point, because in my tax bill, I'm not getting, I'm not getting a reduction.
Because I didn't.
Because I didn't, I didn't use the transfer station. And, and the same could be said.
For school.
And, and, and please forgive me, and I hope nobody's listening to this, but condominiums, because they use private haulers, and they don't use the transfer station. But it's in their tax bill. Because we don't break out the tax bill as, you know, police, fire.
Right.
You know, every, it's a, it's a combined rate. So I, I understand what, what you're saying as well. It's just the way we've looked at this, meaning Tom, myself, Kyle, is that we got eighty-one hundred tons or eighty-five hundred tons, whatever the number is that we, it used to be eighty-five hundred tons. That's why I keep saying that. Eighty-one hundred tons, and we just divided the cost of, of fuel and equipment and wages, and then we did a, a overhead calculation for the foreman over there, because he has people in different divisions, and divided that out by the eighty-one hundred, and we just said, this is the, in a, if we were running a business, this would be the cost for us. If we made the decision, if you said, Paul, right now, get, uh, get a company and see how much they're gonna charge the town of Merrimack for outsourcing solid waste, this would be the number that I'd be bringing back to you. A hundred and forty-six dollars a ton would be our break-even there, because that's what we're paying to dispose of this trash. And, and, and that's what we're paying to dispose of this trash with our equipment, with our people, our, our employees, with our, our fuels and things of that sort. So that's how much it costs the town of Merrimack is around the hun, well, hundred, on average, a hundred and forty-six dollars a ton to get rid of a, a ton of trash. Now, is the number somewhere between one twenty-two and, and one forty-six? Potentially, it could be, uh, if, if the council says, you know what? We got a capital reserve funds is capital reserve funds. That's equipment, that's on us, um, kind of deal. Take out the fifteen dollars, we're still at a hundred and thirty-one dollars a ton. You know, if, if you take that out, that's, but that's the cost of us getting rid of it. When we're looking at this, because the majority of the equipment is tractors, trailers, loaders, those are the big items that, that are there to be paid. So that's why we included it in, in the overhead rate.
So the hundred and twenty-five thousand in capital reserve is something we put in annually?
We have put that in annually, yes.
And we need to continue that?
It will drop a little bit in, in what I'm projecting in next year's budget. When I'm bringing the budget forward in a couple of weeks, um, I'm dropping it a little bit to a hundred thousand dollars.
And that's because, um, just the solid waste isn't like highway, where highway, highway is more consistent because we have so much equipment and we have needs every year. In solid waste, um, recently, for the five last years, we replaced the four trailers. Uh, but now we don't need to for a number of years, so that we're in a, we're in a kind of an ebb, CRF-wise for, for solid waste. The next couple of years are pretty lean before we start to, to crank back up again and, and start to replace, because the loaders are new, uh, and the four trailers are new.
Both, both our loaders down there are reasonably new within the last five years. We've replaced all four trailers. Our two tractors are, are newer. We have one that's two years old and one that's probably seven or eight.
And, and it's in great condition, so we've actually deferred it in the, the CIP, which you'll see, um, in the coming weeks.
The point being that the capital reserve fund is intended to be a smooth.
Correct.
Smoothing out factor, and so you would go to a number that would take you five, 10 years out and, and solve all those problems when they come up, so you don't have dips and valleys.
Yep, exactly.
So if a hundred thousand is the ongoing number, then that's the number we ought to be using when we're gonna set this tipping rate, not a hundred and twenty-five.
At the time when they did the, they did a hundred and twenty-five, when I got the budget, trying to look at where. At the time when they did the, they did a hundred and twenty-five, when I got the budget, trying to look at where potential savings would be. I made, they don't, Kyle doesn't even know that. I just, surprise Kyle, just surprise Tom that I'm looking at a hundred thousand dollars in, in solid waste right now in the capital reserve fund going forward. Cause of what we have and, and all the, the new stuff that we have bought.
So it, it may not be a very popular idea, but at one point I was thinking that it would be beneficial if we could get more commercial haulers to pay money to dump stuff in, in Merrimack. As long as they're paying that incremental cost of what it takes for us to do that. And the higher we put the number, the less we're gonna get commercial operators to do that, to bring stuff to Merrimack. So if we, you, you know, if our incremental cost is only a hundred and twenty-two dollars a ton to take that extra ton or extra a hundred tons or, or whatever, then, then if we're, if we're charging a number closer to that, then we can get, we're actually making money off of that additional commercial coming in. And that's why I'm trying to understand what our com, our incremental cost is versus the, the absolute cost, um, spread across all. Cause once you spread that across the whole amount of trash that we bring in, fine, you're covering all your expenses. So that extra ton that you bring in is now a hundred and fifty dollars. But if you could charge a guy a hundred and twenty-five, then you might get two extra tons. And that's two hundred and fifty dollars instead of a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty, or something to that nature.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, looking at it, it, in a, in a business perspective, I think that's a great exercise. I'm not prepared for that discussion. Uh, what I would say is our guys are pretty maxed out. If, if we did lower the rate to encourage more commercial, which I think you're right, that would have that effect. We, the likelihood would be we'd be taking more loads on overtime. So it would be really something we'd have to study. Um, our, 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 we have two EO threes and they're literally maxed out.
At our current.
But they're forty hours and, and they already work overtime to, to do what we currently take in. Um, so it, it would be a neat exercise to, to kind of forecast that. Um, but I'm not at all prepared for that discussion.
Yeah. I, I, I understand that, but.
I don't know whether it'll help your, uh, or not, but the trash that you're talking about raising the higher prices on, if the commercial haulers don't wanna pay the price, they can't take it to another town necessarily. It's going to come to us because it's Merrimack trash. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Well, they hauled it up to Pembroke by themselves in the past.
Yeah, not all commercial haulers come to us.
Yeah, and, and that's, there, there are some cheaper tipping fees, but there's also cost of doing business for them. Meaning now that fuel diesel is almost four dollars a gallon and that it takes two hours round trip for them to get up to Concord. That's two hours their guys are really not making money for them. So they, to offset those two hours, they wanna bring their trash to Merrimack and have our.
People do.
People, our employees dealing with that because that's their business decision. That they don't wanna go the two hours. And, and, and yes, I've had many a conversation with a couple of local trash haulers here, um, on that. We have tried lowering the tipping rate where we have been below, um, average because it's been at a hundred and twenty-two for at least five years. And it's never increased the commercial haulers that we get. We get one or two commercial haulers. The big guys, the, the allies, the, the Casellas, Casella's bringing it to their own plant. They don't wanna come to the town of Merrimack. Because it, it's not beneficial for them to pick up seven dumpsters in the town of Merrimack and then go dump it at the town transfer station where these guys are, are running a route that they're going into Nashwha, they're going into Manchester, going into Bedford to pick up their trash. And they're gonna bring it to where they wanna bring it because they got the bigger, compacter trucks. Um, so we're not gonna get those kind of haulers. We might get a couple more small haulers. Um, there's one that I don't think we've seen. It's the one out of Dairy, um, which was new to me that, that, you know, but they're advertising forty-three dollars a, a pickup, I think, on their website. Or thirty, it was thirty-five or forty-three dollars a pickup, which is one barrel. So, or, you know, two barrels at most, but that's what they were charging. And they'd be coming at four-thirty in the morning in the town of Merrimack and disturbing neighbors. So, you know, but I don't believe they're dumping here in, in town. I think they're, they're dumping where they, they're, they're going to dump. So, um, you know, honestly, the, the, it is a large increase. It would, it would have about twenty, what did you say, Kyle?
Twenty-two fifty.
Yeah, twenty-eight dollar.
Twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
To go to one-fifty would be a twenty-eight dollar increase.
Yeah, so, so it, so it is a large jump for them. When, when you think of that, if, if, you know, it's, it's that five hundred dollars times, five hundred tons. If I can get my calculator up here. Say five hundred times twenty-eight. It's about fourteen thousand dollar increase in cost to, to, to these haulers.
To those haulers, yeah.
But then again, we jumped six dollars a ton from our current contract to this new contract that we had assigned. And the next one with the commercial, we've jumped almost twenty dollars a ton. So cost of getting rid of trash i- is going up and it's getting expensive. And, and we're eating, you know, the fuel cost and, and things of that sort. And, and the two hours of time, our guys, it's a benefit for, for that because it does take them an hour to get up to Concord, an hour to get back. And we're saving wear and tear on their trucks and we're putting the wear and tear on the town trucks. So I guess the one question is, 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 it, is, I, can we agree that the fuel, the equipment, the wages that are associated with it are all part of the overhead cost? And then we do have a foreman over there that has to supervise that. And when one of those guys are out, make sure that we get somebody in to do that job. Um, so, you know, out of the sixty-three, can we say that forty-eight dollars is a, is a good number? That we're all in agreement on? And then it's really the capital reserve fund deposits. Um, whether or not we charge that off as an overhead fee or we eat that cost. As a, as a town because it's already in these people's tax rate. So that, that I guess is, is the, the main, uh, you know, if we can agree with the other overhead, then we can, you know, debate the capital reserves a little more. You know, I guess is, is, is the question.
That I, I would be happier with those kinds of ideas. Maybe call it fifty dollars for the, which is what we think we've been calling it is fifty dollars, uh, for the overhead costs in the past.
Right, yeah. Yes. That's what we've been calling it.
Anyway, Finley.
I'm in agreement with that. And, uh, but on top of that, I would like, I, I don't know that it should be a heroic effort right out of the gate, but I'm interested in, um, what it would cost to, and would we in fact, if we did keep a lower rate, bring in more commercials, needing the manpower and everything else that might be associated with it. But would we get it low enough to bring in haulers to make it so it might be of a financial benefit is I guess what I was thinking.
And if I might add the corollary to that is if we bump it twenty-seven or twenty-eight dollars, are we gonna lose anybody? So that we're not bringing in that extra cash and still paying all those overhead expenses and things like that.
Yep. So that's for, for some future conversation. I mean, we have to do something cause we're coming into, we're in December. What am I saying? We're here. So, uh, so for this evening, yeah, I, I, I think it's reasonable with, you know, to come in at the fifty-dollar handling for the time being and have that further discussion to see if it is beneficial in one way or another.
Did you have something else or did I already called you? Okay. Sorry, I didn't mark you up. Barbara?
Yeah, Kyle, for the trash going to the waste to energy plant?
Yeah.
It's our haulers that are doing that, right?
Correct.
And do we actually have to pay a fee to the plant to take our garbage?
Yeah, that's that tipping fee.
Okay, so their waste to energy, where does the energy go?
Um, they create electricity. I'm not sure where it goes to.
You know what I'm saying here. In other words, we're paying for them to take our garbage. They're turning it into energy and reaping the benefits of that as well. Yeah.
They are.
What a neat proposition.
But if you look at the landfill cost, it's ninety-two dollars. So versus seven.
I think it's ninety-two.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five dollars compared to the seventy-eight. So they're giving us a break in, in the tonnage. Not a great break, but they're giving us a break in the tonnage. We're not paying the ninety-five to, to have it buried in the ground. So they are giving us some break because they are making money off of making electricity.
Yep.
And, 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 you know, they're making money on us. They're, they're a pro, for-profit business and.
What else are we gonna do with that?
And we even called up.
They have no choice.
It's funny because that plant got sold. So our, our main company that we were using ally, ally, not allied, um, our main company that waste management that we were using used to own the plant. It got sold to another guy. We tried calling them saying, hey, you already have our capacity. What's our rate you're gonna be? And they're like, nope, talk to waste management. We're not gonna get involved with this. Talk to waste management. Like, but you got our capacity. So if you don't, if we don't go to waste ma, they don't, we have a contract with waste management. And they got so many tons they're allowed to bring into this plant. If you're gone, they'll pick somebody up to bring them in. We, you know, go talk to waste management kind of deal. So we've tried other angles too, to try to get that, that fee down of our normal tipping fee. So I did some quick math at a hundred thousand dollars for, for the capital reserve funds. And that'd be twelve dollars and thirty-five cents a ton based on the eighty-one hundred tons. So that will drop basically another three, so it'd be sixty dollars instead of fifty for round numbers.
That's still a twenty-five dollar increase for the commercial haulers that are coming today, right? So.
Yes.
I mean, we're, we're gonna see some increase because we're, we're going up from what sixty-eight or something a ton to seventy-eight a ton or?
Uh, we're going up, uh, from seventy-two fifty to seventy-eight.
Okay, so effectively six dollars a ton.
Well, one thing I, I could offer as a suggestion, um, and whichever way you go on the overhead doesn't, doesn't affect this suggestion. If you wanted to approve, um, you know, we took it as, you know, residents like a rate, an even rate. They like to know what it is over a number of years. Um, so that's why we kind of tried to do some averaging in there. But the council could certainly elect to say, December fifteenth, this year, this is the rate. Next year, it's gonna be that, um.
Add three dollars or whatever, yeah.
Two dollars and fifty cents more. So you don't have to have, you know, that, that full rate. We could have a different rate every year. And, and that would be no problem for us to handle. And that might make the, the transition a little more palatable. Um, and I guess the one other thing I would add, and mostly just cause Chris put a whole bunch of work into it. Um, he did, um, solicit costs on all of the stuff, uh, we have, we charge fees on from fifteen other communities. And just for your reference, the average, um, fee that, that gets charged, uh, by towns for commercial trash, which is what we're talking about, is seven point six one cents. So even higher than what we're talking about, just slightly, but.
That's what gets charged to commercial haulers?
Correct, for commercial trash. Yeah, not C and D, just commercial trash. C and D we have broken out as a separate category. So to the point, would, would others come to us versus leave, uh, based on the numbers and us being in the range? I don't think we'd see a lot of change, um, but.
Right.
Um, you know, the facilities are all charging us all essentially the same thing.
Unless they can, well, I mean, I've, I've talked to a local haulers in the past and they were at one point hauling up to Pembroke or something by themselves because it was cheaper.
Bow, bow. They were going to bow, in the bow area.
In the bow area or something, um, because it was cheaper than, than dumping here, you know. And so now I've, now I understand some of them, at least one of them are coming here because they don't wanna spend the time on the road. But if you dump it up another twenty-eight bucks, they, they might go back to that again. In which case now you lose that income.
Sure.
Uh, and it doesn't help us at all, but, um, I don't, I don't know that I'm, I can, I, I can throw out a number that makes a whole lot of sense. I'd much rather see us stay at the fifty and just deal with the, the increase in the, in the cost per ton, uh, is for tr, for the tipping fees. But if, if we need to do something different than that, then that's what we need to do. I'm just not, I'm just not convinced that the overhead rate is the right number to be charging the commercial haulers at this time personally. So where do we wanna go at this point?
Quick question. You mentioned the other transfer stations owned by towns. Do they all charge extra for commercial?
Um, so most of them, interestingly, um, for, for commercial trash, ten of the, ten of the fifteen don't accept commercial trash at all.
Of those that do?
Do they charge different rates? Um, like Bedford, for example, doesn't, like us, doesn't charge a residential rate. Their commercial rate is seven and a half cents. Um, Goffstown is the same. They don't charge a residential rate. Their commercial rate is fourteen cents.
Wow.
Hookshead. They're, they're down at five cents. So you've got kind of the two outliers there.
But they're also closer up the road.
Right.
To bow, to bow.
Yeah, to bow, sure.
Yeah. And Raymond is eight point six cents. And again, they don't charge for residential.
And they're close to bow.
Well, no, Raymond actually, I would have to bring their trash to Rochester.
They'd probably go to Rochester, I would guess.
Really?
Yeah, that's where they would go. Because that's the other landfills in Rochester.
And, and that's where we take our, our C and D well tapping, um, so.
Right. So, so basically what we did is we used the same overhead rate for both C and D and trash. And that's where we came up with, with the dollar amount. Um, if you, if it's fifty dollars, it's, it's, it's fifty dollars, fifty dollars plus, you know. What we were trying to do is we were trying to keep the rate as con, for five years, kinda. We'd make money the first year. We'd make money the second year. Break even the third year, lose money in the fourth year, lose money in the fifth year.
It's like the federal budget.
But, yeah, but overall, over the five years, we'd break even on, on the trash. And this way, the haulers would know for five years the rate was set and they could charge accordingly.
See, I, I think that's appropriate. I mean, I think it's a big ouch in the beginning, but if you're guaranteed and you're knowledgeable and know how your business is gonna be affected three, four, five years from now, I, that's more palatable to me as a business owner. And that separates the debate that you're talking about. But if it's decided that it's gonna be paid differently, then to me it makes perfect sense to have that extended out and do a little bit more now and then over time a little bit less. It's six and one half dozen another bottom line. But as long as they know about it is the bottom line and they can plan their business. Part of the problem with businesses is when you don't know what's, your future's gonna hold. That's the difficulty.
And, and the other thing is, we weren't planning on putting these rates into effect on the fifteenth because we'd have to give them some time.
Notice.
And we didn't think it was, okay, tomorrow if you all approved it on the third, okay, here you go. We might not see them for a week. And then say, oh, by the way, the rates are going up. We would do it like middle of January, end of January kind of deal with them to say, this is the increase starting February first, for instance. Here's the new tipping rate for commercial trash. So we'd give them some time to be able to adjust their business one way or the other. Whether they would have to go out for a price increase on their thing or decide to take it someplace else.
I'm not gonna be around five years. That's what, the discussion's gonna be exactly the same.
So I guess the only, uh, comment I would make to that Nancy is if, if they came back to us and instead of giving us a, a different number each year, they just said it's gonna be eighty-three fifty for five years. Would you feel comfortable with the bigger increase, but knowing that it's constant over five years? Cause you're saying that the businesses ought to be comfortable with the higher increase.
Either one would be okay with me, but I think a decision should be made about a five year so that the businesses can plan. How you proportion that over the time, six and one and a half dozen another for me.
So what you're saying.
If that answers your question.
So what you're saying that as long as they know that it's seventy-eight plus fifty, eighty-three plus fifty the next year. So it's, it's gonna go up each year and this is, you know, two dollars and fifty cents, two dollars and fifty cents, three dollars, two dollars and ninety cents. And that's, that's what it's going up over there.
And if for some reason, something changes, which will not happen and we all know that, where it's, where we won't need that increase, that's a whole different issue. That's, that's probably the only debate against it. Well, what if prices get better? You've already said and, and posted that it's for five years. Well, what if prices get better? You've already said and and posted that it's for five years. We know that's not gonna.
This is our.
But that's an argument.
This is, this is our contract for removal of trash. And and honestly, what we did when we did some of the, like, the wages and fuel and equipment, those are, those are current budget numbers.
That's right.
Those don't include any wages that might be wa- wage adjustments, cost of living, fuel going up, things of that sort. So we already kinda taken that in, in, we didn't take that into account, saying, okay, let's put a five percent kicker on fuel. We said, okay, what do we currently have in the budget for fuel? Let's divide that out by the number of tons.
The reality is those numbers in fact may be underestimated.
In the future years as well.
Which to Tom's point earlier is why I rounded up from seven point three one four to seven point five.
Yeah, and you said that in here, so I appreciate your pointing that out. I just, I I'm still not comfortable with that overall calculation, so I don't think it ought to be the sixty-three dollars.
Totally get it, yeah.
I mean, I I get what you're saying, Paul, but I, if if the number, i- i- if, for example, the capital reserve fund deposit shouldn't be in there when you're talking about the additional commi- commercial that you're gonna hu- charge extra for, then then it changes that sixty-three number a lot, and so there's a lot of room in there to uh to be able to take into account cost wage increases and stuff like that, but.
And I and I would add, I I think it's a different discussion for trash versus demo too. Because trash, as you said, everybody has, everybody creates trash. Not everybody creates demo, so it's it's even more of that subsidy question. Um, so I.
You're bringing in more commercial.
I guess what I'm saying is, I agree with you, yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I guess what we're looking for
Is what do you want?
Is is is, because this is the crux of of the next discussion as well. What are, what's the council comfortable for with with for overhead rate? Cause the contracts are the contracts. Tipping fee is the tipping fee that we gotta pay. It's, what what is the council comfortable for for the overhead rate? I've I've heard fifty. And like I said, if you take out the tipping fee for for CRF, we're at, we're at the fifty-dollar level.
I think it takes into account Tom's thoughts.
We take the ca- it takes the capital reserve out of out of the the equation of of overhead in that in that case.
But it doesn't take away the concept and the need for capital reserve.
No, because our entire system needs the capital reserve still, regardless of whether we have any commercial or not.
Correct.
Right, and so the commercial is incremental in in addition to that, and so it it just strikes me that they ought to be able to bring in it, cause we're bringing in extra money when we bring in the commercial. Whereas any resident that goes there and drops off their trash, we don't bring in any extra cash. It's already been collected out of the taxes.
That's a philosophical difference. And it is. I understand your point, but it's a philosophical difference.
And and.
And I don't mind charging them, but how much do we charge them and do we charge so much that we send them away when we could be actually reducing our costs for the residences by bringing in commercial additional funding?
But I agree with Kyle in the sense that that's worthy of a debate all on its own. And have a calculation and a presentation of what the difference would be, so that I would be able to personally make a judgment. Theoretically, you may be absolutely right, and you probably are, but I'd wanna see it worked out before I would make a decision on it.
We'd have to cro- you know, Tom would have to dust off his cost accounting books. And figure figure that out, because tha- that's a, that, seriously, that's what manufacturing does. A- and that's cost accounting one-on-one, is is the tier. You know, Kyle's saying that we, these gentlemen, these these three, you know, the two operators and one scale operator, or the two operators are are maxed. So if we bring in another hundred tons, can can, is is that, is that the breaking point where we'd have to hire a part-timer?
That's exactly what I need to know.
So, but that that, you know, this is something that we definitely would have to study and 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 break in, break out our cost accounting books and dust those off.
So if we were to say to you fifty dollars and do the capital reserve debate at a later time with the data that you could give us, would that, is that, would that fulfill what you're talking about, Tom?
Yeah, but I'm not sure how, i- if we set a rate now and we say it's for five years, are we gonna come back in six months and change that number? If we decide that we wanna include the capital reserve funds in there or change that? That's that's the concern I'm having. So I have no problem with having the debate and the discussion about what the overhead rate ought to be. I'm just, I don't know whether we can make a decision tonight and set something and then turn around in six months or three months and change that.
Bingo.
And so I'm I'm trying to figure out if there's a balance. Maybe we go up to fifty-five or something like that and and hope that that amount.
I'm waiting to hear some other opinions, yeah.
So what if we only do a rate for two thousand twenty-two? And it gives you time to go ahead and do this cost analysis? And then you can set the future, eh, depending on if it goes, probably go up. But at least you have something and you're not being rushed to do the whole, the whole package.
I I think that's a really good compromise.
Because it it doesn't have to be a five-year rate setting. I mean, it can be annual.
It can be.
I don't want it to be three months, you know, to do something today and three months later, jack it up again.
Honestly, we couldn't get you the cost data until probably, and and until the summer. And I know people out there, oh, what do you mean? We're going into budget season.
No, I I realize you're busy.
It that that, for people that don't understand municipal budget, that month of January, February, March, it starts calming down a little bit, but then we're kicking into gear of, we're in the last quarter of the fiscal year. So I would have to say, we we wouldn't be bringing something back within three months. We'd probably be bringing that over the summer to have the discussion with the council, probably July, August timeframe, to have the discussion with the council for the next.
For the next year.
For the next year, setting, setting of the rate.
I think that's a great idea.
But it would still give you time to set the rate and notify the vendors as well.
All of which.
For a year.
All of which to say is, I won't be around the next five years, but I'd love to be sitting on the couch watching the next council have this same discussion, which we had about four years ago. And I listened to, as well as some of us sitting around the table, three times in the last twelve years.
The same debate?
Well, the debate back and forth, but guess what? The cost of getting rid of a ton of trash is higher now than it was in two thousand when I started maybe understanding a little bit of it. I appreciate all the council's concern and so on, but just recognize what it is we're talking about.
Finley.
I think I'd like to, you call it overhead costs? I'd like to, uh, move that we make the overhead costs, uh, for a ton of commercial trash to be, or tr- garbage, whatever you wanna call it.
Trash is fine.
Trash is fine. Uh, waste, uh, uh, to be fifty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Um, and I would agree with that number. Does anybody else have any thoughts on setting that number for this year and then in the, and within the next year, we would reevaluate more thoroughly?
So that's part of the motion?
Makes sense.
Yes, yeah, no, for for one year, yeah, because I.
Should be reevaluated.
And I don't have a problem with doing it annually as well, but for for this year, for the for the fifty-five dollars, yes.
We're good, we're we're good with that. It's it's just so that we can get.
Right, get some number to move forward with.
Move forward with, and and that's a reasonable from, you know, where we're at. And it's, we can back that number up if somebody really wanted to ask. We can back it up.
If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero. So we'll set the overhead rate for trash and C and D at fifty-five dollars per ton.
Nice debate, everybody.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So that makes the cost per ton for, starting in the middle of January or February first for household trash, a hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, um, if I could get a motion for that?
And a date.
And a date.
What was the date you wanted?
What do you, what do you think, Kyle? Middle of January?
I I thought January first, but, um, whatever it is, we just need to get it publicized.
How about the end of January, so so that everybody can make their customers aware.
Yep, so it's all, so what I need a motion for, um, household, we'll call it household trash, um, per ton for commercial haulers is a hundred and thirty-three dollars effective February first.
So moved.
Moved by Barbara, seconded by Finley, to set the rate at a hundred and thirty-three dollars a ton for commercial haulers of household municipal waste.
Starting February first.
Starting February first of two thousand twenty-two. All those, any other comments or, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero.
So, we can move on to the construction demolition, but it would be the ninety-five plus the fifty-five. The debate here is, commercial haulers pay from pound zero.
From where?
Zero. So even if they have a hundred pounds of of trash, uh, co- construction debris, they pay starting with the first pound.
Hundred pounds, yeah.
For the first pound, pound zero.
Yeah.
Residential, though, gets the first thousand pounds free. So if I am doing a roof and I go and do my residential and I'm not a commercial hauler and I I take my roof shingles to the dump and I break it out over three loads of nine hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, I get charged zero dollars to to dump those shingles. However, if I bring my shingles in
As one load.
A one load, I get charged from pound zero to, what, nine-nine is eighteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-six hundred pounds. I get charged for the twenty-six hundred pounds. The debate is, is that, are we still gonna keep that for residential, up to a thousand pounds is zero? Versus, um, and Kyle has some numbers, you know, explain those to you, what what's been going on the last year. Is that gonna be zero or are we gonna s- make it both for commercial and residential tax, residential people, starting at pound zero?
Is that intended to be part of this discussion or is that a new topic? Cause it's not in any of this write-up.
I understand that and and blame me for that. Kyle had it and I I I know that was gonna be a question that was gonna be asked. So that is, uh, um, we needed some more information when this was going there. But Kyle does have those numbers for for the council to talk about. And that might be a discussion that the council doesn't wanna have tonight, and I understand that as well. Uh, but Kyle, why don't you give them your numbers that you have?
Sure, thanks, Paul.
If if you want, counsel.
Let me, can we just wait just a second? The number of ninety-five a ton that we're being charged to get rid of that, do, can we just say that we're gonna add that to the fifty-five dollars overhead and make that our commercial rate? And we can discuss what you wanna do residential-wise? I mean, I, I I'm trying to get us going forward here and that that seems like a side topic that we could spend some time on, cause nobody's prepared to discuss, but, so.
Whatever you wanna do, if that that, you know, if that's how you wanna, ninety-five plus fifty-five is, uh, a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty for for C and D.
And what, and right now, we charging one-twenty-two fifty for C and D?
One-twenty-two.
Yeah.
One-twenty.
Um, our current, our current contract with waste, they take both our demo and our trash. The new trash contract we have with waste, they didn't want C and D to be part of it anymore. So we're actually, eh, we're taking it to the same place. We're just going direct to where waste took it. And and, um.
Paying a lot less than they were charging.
It turns out waste was subsidizing our C and D the last five years. Um, and and that's the reason for the big increase.
Okay. So I'd like, I'd like to go ahead and 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 deal with that C and D number for commercial at this point. And then lie to discuss that, but if people wanna hear it otherwise, I I guess I don't have heartburn over it. I'm just trying to move us forward.
And I I agree with the keeping the the overhead charge of fifty-five dollars for the, uh,
So we recommend it for next year, starting February first, construction demolition would be a hundred and fifty dollars a ton?
Yes, so moved.
That moved by Finley.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy Harrington. Are there any other questions or discussion on that? Calling for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six zero zero. Now, you wanted to talk about how are we, how are we dealing with residential as far as C and D is concerned?
Um, sure. Um, so right now, as Paul mentioned, the the first thousand pounds is free, um, to to residents. It it's something we've, we, one thing we've had to deal with as a result of this over the years, um, is we get the the folks that come in and lie to us. No, 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 this isn't a commercial venture. I'm a resident. I'm doing it for my neighbor. I'm doing it for my grandmother. Um, and they bring in the the three loads, just under a thousand pounds. Um, as, and and, you know, it's how the town operated and and that's fine. We, you know, the rules are there for us to follow and 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 operate. As costs started to creep up, um, I had asked Chris to start tracking that, the difference between the residential demolition and the um, commercial demolition. And and the numbers were pretty staggering, which is, I thought, what, you you guys should at least know that. So, um, I I'm gonna give you, so we have eleven months of data for this year, but I I ratioed it up for the full twelve months. So for residential demo, uh, we're expecting, um, just using our seventy-one fifty current tipping fee, that doesn't include the overhead charge. Um, it's gonna amount to seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. If we add our current, bring it up to the one hundred twenty-two dollars, which is our current fee, it's a hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. That we're not taking in on demo, that we're paying to dispose of. And as I said, that's, that's about eleven hundred, uh, tons per year. Um, I had done the calculations based on the the one sixty, uh, which uh, would equate to a hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred, uh, for next year, if we got the same tonnage. And we're pretty consistent on that. So I just thought, where it's such a big number, it it was worthy of discussion.
But if somebody were to bring in municipal waste, eh, the first thousand pounds is free for a resident as well, right? If you, if I if I brought in two thousand pounds of municipal waste as a resident, I would get charged the the commercial tipping fee, wouldn't I?
For trash?
Yeah.
No, only only commercial people are charged for trash.
Even if I brought in two thousand pounds?
Yes, correct.
Which is demo. So how are you?
No, house- household trash is always free to residents.
No matter what quantity they bring in.
Correct. It's only the commercial haulers that we charge for trash, and that's why I was saying the the, um, the the fee strike, it it's a, it's a different argument from what you were making on on the trash. Because everyone has trash that they generate. Not everyone has demolition that they generate. Now, particularly when you talk about, you know, who is our tax base? It's the condos, it's the business people as well as the the homeowners who might do a rental project.
And and you believe that a lot of that residential demo that's brought in is really commercial demo?
Some of it certainly is.
What what percentages do you guess?
I, um, I I couldn't place a guess. I wouldn't dare. You know, it it's hard, it's hard to tell. But, you know, Steve used to bellyache about it. Uh, Chris has mentioned it as well. I'm sure Lon saw it. Lon ran the scale. So I'm sure he he saw it, um, live and in person.
You see the same truck.
Over and over again.
Over and over again, it's like.
Not just once a month, but every week or something.
You start wondering, you know, you're like, okay, where's this from? And and the best one is, oh, this is from, um, my house on, you know, X Y Z street. Okay, and then it comes in a couple of weeks later, oh, this is from my house, this is from a house on, you Great Stone Drive. Oh, this is from a house on Mallard Point. It's like, you own a lot of houses, buddy.
But they still, they're only paying, if it's under a thousand. If it's over a thousand, you haven't paid the entire time.
Correct, yeah.
So are you telling me that a commercial, a a roofer coming in with somebody's roof is making sure they keep it under a thousand pounds and making multiple trips?
Yes, that does.
If it's a commercial roofer, we know about it, eh, he's paying. But if he's coming in saying, I'm just dumping for, you know, my, my neighbor had his roof done. He asked me, I have a dump trailer. Let me bring it in. But we're seeing, we're seeing the same vehicle several times. And Lon could attest to this. It's, it's one or two guys that are, oh, I, it's, this house is on this road. Oh, my grandmother's best friend asked me to.
It may not even be Merrimack roofs.
Well, Steve followed a guy once, out of town, more than once, he would follow him, because he knew they weren't coming from there, so. But the, the.
And they were out of town.
Can we blacklist those people and not accept their stuff?
Well, basically. If we can prove it, we do, yes.
And Steve told him, I don't wanna see you coming back. Unless you can prove that it's, cause he was using a Merrimack address, and he was, he followed him out to Wilton, when he was doing a renovation out there.
It was the most part, the haulers, if I may use the word, kinda police themselves.
Correct.
And, um, an aware scale operator or an aware supervisor in the trailer kinda knows the clientele, knows the vehicles, lay of the land, and who's who. So it, yes, it's problematic, and yes, it can create a bad day for either the employee or the person that's trying to cheat the town, but it's not a major, major problem.
No, and I, and I don't wanna overstate that part of it, the, the bigger part to me was that, that, and, and I don't, I don't take a, a stand on this, because that's not my position too. Um, but the, the, we try and do everything fair and equitably, and, and the, the bigger part of that is the, the businesses and condos who don't do reno and bring reno materials to us, are paying this freight, um, to, to a tune of a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars this year. So I thought that was the bigger discussion point. So I don't wanna get sidetracked to Lon's point, that's a smaller piece of it.
A question, or did you make?
I don't remember what it is.
Okay. Um, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is where we can go from here, do we drop that number in half and say five hundred pounds? I mean, assuming that's a more reasonable amount for a residence to have for a, a residential demo, a, a room, or some, some drywall or something like that, or, or what's the recommendation?
My recommendation would be charge from pound one, but.
From pound one for C and D, even though they're paying through their taxes to have all this recycling materials there, the, the, the transfer station there and, and the equipment and the people salaries and all that kinda stuff, you're gonna then charge them again?
Right, because the, the transfer station isn't, so the RSA for trash is for trash. Says the town has to offer a disposal place for, for trash. Nothing says we have to offer it for C and D. Contractors or, or homeowners doing renos can have a dumpster dropped off in their front yard and pay for it that way. Um, so I, I, I would say the difference that way.
I, I, this is where Kyle and I kinda differ a little bit.
We do.
On this, um, because I can see it now. Gentleman bringing a couple of pieces of two-by-four, some pressure-treated lumber, throwing it in a door. That's technically not a lot of weight, but I could see somebody saying, wait a second, how come he's not paying? And I had to pay to drop off three railings the other week and things of that sort. So I don't know where the pound.
I don't know where that number is either.
I don't know where that pound is, because if we put it at five hundred, they'll just make.
Six trips. Well, you know, that's costing them some level of.
Some level, but, you know, the, the, you know, is it five hundred, is it two fifty, is it, is it, is it still at the thousand? I don't know exactly where that is, and, and honestly, I think that might be also part of the discussion this summer of where that, that break is, when we look at it, you know, what, what, what's the break, uh, you know, um, I did a deck, I redid my deck. And I made two, three loads with my truck, but that was my choice, taking all my pressure-treated, and that was just planking and things of that sort. But that was my choice to break it up that way. Um, other people might've just thrown it all in a trailer and just said, you know what, my time's valuable, I'm gonna just go once to the dump and, and dump it, and, and it would've been over the thousand pounds. If it was five hundred, I don't know if I would've broke it up anymore than, than what I did, but I, you know, I was around six hundred, seven hundred and six hundred pounds, I think, were my three trips.
Did they run you on the scale?
I ran, I ran over, I ran over the scale because I was bringing construction debris, and, and that's basically, you should be running over the scale if you're bringing construction debris over, just to show them that this is what I have, where do you, do, you know, where do you, where do you want it, kinda deal? And they say, okay, wait, and they call you in and dump it out that way. Um, so, you know, where's the break even? Because I go there a lot of times, and, and somebody's, somebody's calling the guy over, come on over and throw in, you know, a couple two-by-fours, or, you know, a barrel of, of cut ends of a, two-by-sixes and, and dumping them in, into, into the thing, is, is okay, do we have, now, are we running people over the scale all the time for, for, for that? Because they're not just throwing regular trash, they're throwing construction debris. I don't have that answer, I don't know what the good, the good is. Um, and I'm of the belief that.
Can I help you out a little bit? Can I help you out a little bit?
Thank you, stop me digging.
Again, C and D, when you get into that, it's not the resident only, it's construction guys who often have utility trailers. They may do three jobs in a week, and bring it out on Saturday. Over a thousand pounds.
They may do those jobs in Amherst and Merrimack and Bedford.
They're charging the guy, you know, they're charging the person that we're doing the work for to get rid of it.
That's true.
That's part of the, part of the deal, so.
I, I'm not saying for the commercial.
We can have all kinds of discussions about it, folks, but the thousand pounds has worked so far with us, unless I'm that many years out of the scalehouse and don't know, but, uh, when you start looking at that kind of division, and, not to diminish things, but in little amounts like that, you're not really gaining anything.
I tend to agree with you, I'm just trying to figure out if there is a number that's, that's a better number to be working with than a thousand, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to guess that number.
Could we make the penalty worse for being fraudulent?
Is there a penalty, I mean?
Well, the penalty is if you do that again. If we make it clear, it's not gonna be tolerated at all, and they lose their privileges soon as you found out. And then you have to find them, catch them, I understand.
Then you have to prove it, yeah.
You know, the, what happens sometimes is, is then, you know, when, you gotta catch them. Number two, you gotta prove it. Number three, you potentially have to get the police involved. Depending on the dollar amount, it's not, it's a misdemeanor versus a, a, you know, if it's over a, if it's over a thousand dollars, I think, then it becomes the next level.
But we have charge of privileges, don't we? It's not a matter of finding them, they have a privilege of being able to use it. Whatever. I don't know the answer.
I, I don't know the answer, to be honest, I, I don't know the answer, sorry.
It's funny, good. I actually was going to, not, not for this discussion tonight, I was, I was gonna say that when a resident brought in two thousand pounds, they should still get the thousand for free, but I'm not even gonna go there, so.
Barbara, you had your hand up earlier.
So what exactly is the definition of construction and demo? Because, I mean, we're talking about single pieces of wood versus, I'm thinking if you tore a roof off and now, cause shingles are heavy, they're hard enough to get up there, so most people don't shingle a, a roof by themselves, they hire it out. Um, you got marble countertops, et cetera. So what exactly is the definition? Because I think we need to know that, because if you know what's in the pot, then you can identi, you know, it's easier for us. So if a guy's coming in with, you know, sinks and et cetera, then we have to pay to move that out, and it's not trash.
Right, so it.
I don't care who you are.
You, you just, you just nailed it, Barbara, it's, everything you said is included in C and D. And it, it really, it's, if it's not trash, it's C and D.
Right.
Your plywood, uh, AZEC boards, um, two-by-fours, uh, pressure-treated wood, uh, shingles, sinks, uh, countertops.
Mm-huh.
Porcelain, um, that, that can't go in the class.
Toilets.
Yes, exactly, the tile, yeah, carpets.
Mm-huh.
Um, i- if you're, anything you would do to reno your house, that's C and D. Things like appliances, uh, hot water heaters, that goes in the metal bin, there's no cost for that.
Has a different string.
Correct.
So, I mean, and some of that is light, and some of it is heavy.
Correct.
But it's still charging, we still have a cost, I don't care if you're a resident or not, there's still a cost to get rid of it. That's different from trash. And is the tipping fee more for that?
Yeah, the tipping fee, starting December fifteenth, is ninety-five dollars a ton for the C and D material.
So maybe we think about lowering the ton, the, the await. Leave the price, leave it still free, but maybe you only get eight hundred pounds versus a thousand, just thought.
That certainly, I thought, where's the number? I mean, I, obviously, I'd have a hard time putting eight hundred pounds of stuff in my car, so I wouldn't, wouldn't expect to get tagged for it, but I'd usually put two fifty, you know, so, I mean, I've, anyway. Nancy?
Yeah, I, I too don't know the number, but, married to somebody who does a lot of home renovation in my house, and, and I realize, have accompanied him many times to the dump. Um, couple of things, uh, part of the issue, and Nancy raised it, was we have people taking advantage of a system that is, is in place for Merrimack residents. Um, and it certainly seems like there has to be something, uh, that's gonna hold people, I mean, it's fraudulent. It's, I can't imagine, over a thousand dollars, uh, you know, you've got a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars worth of costs, um, you know, for this, uh, which is, which is, I mean, it's illegal to, to, to use a dump, that, for those purposes, if they're not residents and they're, or not paying, um, for commercial. So I think there has to be a piece of, um, uh, you know, holding accountability to the people that you, you know. I mean, I've seen people from Bedford pulling into our dump, you know, and, and I'm sure there are other people using it as well. Um, you know, I would hate to see the, the residents be, um, lose the ability to use the dump in the way that they have. Of course, if it's costing us so much more, I mean, the bottom line is, we have to pay for that. But I don't think we should be paying for people that are ta, abusing the dump. Um, I don't think, you know, the residents should be, should be, um, dealing with the cost of that. So I agree, it's just a matter of where do you draw that number, and, and I think that would just helps knowing what our costs are to, to, to move that. So, don't envy your, your, uh, trying to figure it all out, thanks, Kyle.
So if they break their, their loads into half-ton loads, in order to get below the thousand pounds, they're, they're saving seventy-five dollars a trip, but they're making three, four trips or something like that, and then they're telling little lies about where it came from and stuff like that. I, so, there's a certain liability and concern there, I, I'm, I'm not sure how many people are, are willing to do that, but.
And, and there's a small number that, that are the offenders. It's like everything else, there's a small number. Not everybody who brings construction debris in there is, is, is running several trip, you know, they're running trips, but they're not taking it from other areas, they're just, those are the guys and ladies that are, are doing the, the construction at their house. There is a small number of people that have apartment buildings in this town, and might have four or five other apartment buildings in other towns or other areas that they're doing a renovation and say, okay, I'm going to Merrimack, here I go, let me bring everything to Merrimack. And, oh, by the way, I know that if it's under, um, a thousand pounds, I'll get it for free. And there, there are a small number of them, and, and, and those are the ones that are easier enough to point our finger out and say, hey, you know, you're there. But it's, it's, you know, there are a significant amount of people, and I don't know, and like I said before, I don't know what the poundage is. I don't know if it's two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, keep it a, keep it at a thousand right now until we could try to figure this out more of what a resident can get in construction and demo. I, I cannot see it going down to zero, because I can see people saying, he threw out a two-by-four, he needs to go over the scale and pay, you know, what is a two-by-four weighing?
Thirty-five cents.
Yeah, uh, pressure-treated might, you know, weigh a dollar, when, when all said and done on this. So, you know, and I can't see that. And then, and then we're gonna have people on the Saturday, wait a second, you gotta go over the scale. So the line at the scale, okay, yep, what, and I could just see it more of a, a hassle if we go from zero poundage on some of this stuff. You know, um, case in point, I went to Merrimack, I went to the metal place up in Manchester to drop off metal, and it was the first time I've ever been to a site like up in Manchester, and the guy's, and I'm, I'm like, he's with this little magn, okay, dump this over there and then run over the scale again, and then come back and see.
For every unit.
Basically, okay, this is a different metal, dump that over there and run over the scale again. I ran over the scale three times, and I had like two hundred pounds worth of, of metal in my truck. And I can just see that happening, okay, I got tra, I got trash, and then I got a couple two-by-fours. All right, well, throw out your trash, run, come back over here and run the two-by-fours over the scale, dump those, and then come back to me again. And I could just see it being more of a deterrent than, than a benefit to have.
But the bottom-line argument, if my understanding is right, and we're not gonna come to a decision, I know it, is that we're paying a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars that we're not getting for taxes for the waste, this is above that cost.
Not, we're not getting tax, we're not getting the revenue, the fees.
Revenue, right.
The fees, the tipping fee for, we're getting it in taxes, we're not getting it in tipping fees, cause it's in the tax base.
Right, without revenue coming in.
You're paying for me to dump.
I'm not saying it correctly.
Right.
It's not, it's, okay, I'm just, it's not in the estimation of the waste.
No, it is.
Well, it is in the estimation of the waste, they've already calculated it in as part of this, part of this base rate, overhead rate.
Then I agree with Paul, it's not worth the aggravation.
I think today, we have to move on.
You're, you're paying for me to dump.
I don't think we can come to an intelligent number at this point, we'd be pulling something right out of the air, and we have to.
I think this is a discussion.
Add to the debate some bit later on.
As well.
Lon?
I just have to have some fun.
Just remember that when ten o'clock comes, you had to have fun.
You've ignored that rule ever since I started, so don't worry about it.
No, last week, we didn't. Go ahead.
A thousand pounds probably got, uh, put in place because the people that were bringing in demolition were bringing it in in half-ton pickups, does that make sense?
Yeah.
It gave them some gauge from which to understand what it was the town was doing in terms of fees and what they were bringing to the station. It's like the old railroad rails were kinda built on the same width of wagon roots.
With, yeah.
So, all I wish to say, there's rationale in, in what has been put in place. It's, it's working, it ain't broke, why fix it?
Okay, so I don't think we're gonna come to a resolution on that issue tonight, thank you, Lon, I, I, the half-ton truck is a good, a good, uh.
There was a rationale.
Visual there, it probably makes a better sense. Um, the other, the other fee you've got here is the single-stream recycling, and you're recommending that we just leave it where it is?
I am.
At the current rate of a hundred twenty-four a ton?
Yep.
Does anybody have any heartburn over that? Go ahead.
What happened with the explanation of the three-six-seven, uh, plastics?
Oh, so that, that wasn't part of this discussion, um, because it was in the announcements, I brought packages to discuss if you guys have time.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I guess my only question is, how are you gonna get the public to understand?
We're, we're, actually, everybody who goes to the transfer station, as, as you all know, need a new transfer station sticker. We are doing a public announcement when we give those out, that these are, these are three-six-seven plastics, and we have pictures.
Ah, nice.
In an effort to save time, I'll just leave those with Paul for you guys.
So we do, we do have what a three-six-seven plastic is for homeowners, um, and then they, you know, it's, uh.
When is this effective?
So February first is when our contract starts, but we're gonna start advertising to take the three-six-sevens out fairly soon, just to give a month or so, um, for, for residents to get used to it. And, um, I know we're trying to move along, but if you'll, you'll indulge me a little, just to talk about the new contract for recycling, cause it's different than what we have now. Um, so for the last three contracts we've had, uh, there were two, uh, three-year contracts, and this last one was a one-year contract. So for the last seven years of single-stream, we've had fixed fee. Uh, for the first couple of years, you recall, we were making like five bucks a ton, and now we're paying.
Good old days.
Significantly. Our, our current vendor gave us a, a price, uh, they kept their tipping. Our, our current vendor gave us a, a price, uh, they kept their tipping fee the same, they were increasing their, um, transportation cost. Uh, 'cause unlike trash and demo, the, the recycling operation, um, all of the transportation is on the vendor. It's their compactor, it's their containers, and they come and get them and empty them and bring us back empty ones. So it's, it's a little different narrative than, than the other two streams that we talked about tonight. Um, so, so our, our current vendor price was going up. Um, we, the other, uh, vendor that we, we've been talking with over the years and has continued to give us rates as well, um, operates differently. Their rate structure, rather than being fixed, is a variable rate based on the, um, cost of it or, or profit of the commodities themselves. So for every load we send over, um, uh, for every ton we send over, uh, they have a processing fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, all of the commodities, in, in whatever percentage by weight they are, glass is obviously the heaviest thing we have, cardboard would be second, and papers, and then the plastics are pretty light. Um, whatever the, the commodity market value is for those, gets subtracted from that one-twenty-five. And that's what our monthly processing fee is. They call it a blended fee in the contract. Um, then they also have the compactor charge and the, the transportation charge, just like our current vendor. Uh, but that, that gets calculated monthly, that blended charge. So our rate, rather than being fixed, like it has been the last seven years, it's going to be a variable rate. Um, right now, if we looked at the October numbers, uh, 'cause they provided that for us, what, if, if, if their metrics of what our waste stream looks like is correct, we would have been six dollars and twenty-three cents to the good. In other words, the commodity is made about a hundred and thirty-one dollars in October. So then our only, so our fee for that month would have been pretty low, it would have been about forty-five dollars a ton, which is really great. Um, if the market turns back around again, which, uh, we've seen a lot of volatility the last few years, then that cost is going up. So, um-
But we have a cap.
But, but yes, so, thank you, Paul. So for year one, we have a cap of that blended rate being sixty-five dollars. So the worst, the worst we can do is even if the market goes terrible again, for year one, which starts February first, uh, our cap per month is that sixty-five dollars, which brings us out to that about a hundred and seventeen dollars a ton. And that was the basis of, of my recommendation for the rate. Um, if, if it does turn, the, the contract language is that they make up whatever they lose this year, next year. Uh, we don't have that cap built in for each of the five years, it's only for year one, and it gets adjusted each year depending on the market.
That, that cap-
I just wanted to give that little, little discussion on how it's different from what we've had the last years.
And again, you're only talking about the commercial, single-stream recycling, you're not talking about residential recycling.
Correct, for the rate, yeah.
For the rate.
And this is what all of our, all of our recycling, we have to pay for.
But this is the amount you're gonna charge the commercial people that bring in single-stream.
And it's only for commercial, you're correct. And really, we only have two cur- commercial vendors.
For single-stream?
For single-stream.
So... So where are we at? We're gonna leave it at this number, you're recommending to leave it at the one-twenty-four?
My recommendation is to leave it at the current level, because of the volatility in the market.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Not if we're gonna leave it.
Okay, we'll leave it as it is for now.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And we have information on the three-six-seven, we can look at that independently and-
Yeah.
Have a-
And, and you'll see us put information out, uh, pretty soon on our Facebook page and, and our website.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so, so look for that.
Yep.
And I would, I would suggest, literally, if you can get examples of this-
That's totally our idea, we're, I've asked, uh, Ian and Paul-
And have it hanging right by those.
Exactly, I've asked them to pull actual samples out of the stream, and we're gonna put them up on sandwich boards, up on the, up on the floor. And we're gonna put the, the pictures I just sent around.
Yeah.
We'll make posters of those to hang at the windows as well.
Put big red fluorescent-
It will make new-
No.
It will make good contact for our new Facebook page.
There you go. We'll get a lot of good comments.
I don't know, I don't know whether any of you have ever raised chickens and tried to, you know, be content with the way they knew their coop was arranged and what was supposed to happen during the day.
When you change it.
When this, uh, piece of paper and the billboards and all hit, it's gonna be fun, I'm glad I'm not out there anymore.
I heard you volunteering for the first week.
That's what I heard.
With a big dartboard sign on your chest.
I'm gonna put this, post this on my refrigerator myself, till I get used to it.
I mean, I think the idea is that most of these are things that are not terribly common. Uh, for, I mean, you're not throwing away PVC normally.
We didn't take that, did we? We do take PVC.
Like the plastic, number six is, number six is pretty common.
Is much more reasonably common, yeah.
Yeah, our, our current single-stream flyer takes all plastics, one through seven.
But number six is the one that pe- people are gonna get.
But, but in most cases, the number six, we shouldn't be taking anyway, because if it has food residue in it, the clam-
The cap of number three or the bar-
The caps are fine. But, but like, but like clam shells, if they've got, you know, leftover residue in it, we shouldn't be taking those anyway, 'cause it's trash. If it's not clean, it shouldn't be in the single-stream.
I'm not sure people understand that.
Right, and, and I guess the one piece I left out of the, the new program is, of that percentage breakdown of all of our commodities, there's a residue charge, and they're estimating our residue is at ten percent, and we pay significantly for residue. So, the better job residents do, and the better job that, that Paul and Ian do, that's really gonna help our rate be as low as it can be.
I'm not sure, I mean, I clean too, but I don't know how many people know they should be doing that.
Well, that's, that was my point, yeah. Okay.
So you can add that-
We'll work on that education.
That's more to put on your Facebook page.
Yep, thank you, Lon.
All right, thank you. That took a little while, sorry. Well, we do in three minutes. Um, we have two more items to cover tonight.
Then we can make the motion that we can go beyond ten.
All right, did you just make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Motion by Lon, seconded by Nancy Harrington, to proceed beyond ten, 'cause we have two more items on the agenda tonight. Without discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, we'll go on. Um, the next thing I wanted to bring up, uh, was trustee of the trust funds, a charter change discussion. You, you recall recently, we appointed, uh, a new member to the trustee of the trust funds to take over Jack Balcom's position? And the trust funds, the trustees of the trust funds have come forward and said they wanted to offer another name, uh, as an alternate. And when we look back into the charter, the charter doesn't discuss an alternate position, it discussed only three positions on the trustees. Um, but state RSA that talks about setting up a trustee of the trust funds, uh, does talk about up to two alternates appointed by the town council for one-year periods. And so Chris is asking if we could consider a charter change article to either add in that specific request, which is what I think Paul wrote in his, uh, intro here, or to add in a comment that simply says, uh, consistent with RSA thirty-one colon twenty-two, um, to our charter as far as members of the trustees of the trust fund, because that allows for up to two alternates to be appointed. And so the, I, we're kinda bringing it before the council to see if we wanna go ahead and sponsor this on the warrant as a charter change, uh, or, or not, or if we think there's any discussion that needs to be had around that. Lon?
Yeah, I'm concerned about, um, the appointment of alternates. Um, would they be appointed to an indefinite term?
One-year term. They could be reappointed the next year, but it would be for a one-year term, which is what the RSA specifically states.
All right. I may have something more after all.
Okay. Did, Nancy?
I think it's a good idea, because if in the future, there are some either sicknesses or unfortunate, as has happened with Jack, deaths, they don't have to wait for us to go through the process of getting, recruiting people nominations, and they can't do their business, 'cause they need a quorum. Well, actually, two of the three.
Two of the three is a quorum.
Two of the three is a quorum, so-
But it makes it really difficult to maintain that. And I don't see any reason why not.
I, I don't either. Um, I guess a question that might get thrown out to somebody who was on the charter commission is whether or not there was a thought specifically to leave that out, and, um, that may not be the case.
I don't recall.
I don't recall, no. Well, the discussion was only about the three trustees-
Yeah.
That we had and knew about.
Yeah. I've never, I never knew there was that opportunity, so-
I didn't either, it never occurred to me that there was, until Chris pointed it out, Nicole. Paul?
I would, if you're gonna go, which it sounds like the council is, is in favor of, of putting this forward, um, not that because I wrote it, but I would go with the language that we had in the charter and add that sentence to it, only because RSA thirty-one, um-
Twenty-two?
Thirty-one twenty-two talks about the board of three unless the town has annual special meeting votes for a town of five. And I don't ever see us going to five trustee of trust funds. I would just leave it there and just add that language, allowing the town council to appoint two alternatives for a one-year term. And this has been vetted by the attorneys, and that's what they're suggesting as well.
Okay. Lon?
My, my confusion is, we elect trustees of the trust fund. Okay, and then we appoint trustees of the trust fund?
Alternates, is, is what it says.
Well, okay, alternates.
Right.
I don't know the distinction.
The, the alternate doesn't vote if the other three are present. So, I mean, they're, they only are available to be there.
I understand that, and I think I understand Chris's con- uh, I'm sorry, I think I understand Mr. Christensen's concern that there are times when there's a vacancy. And maybe it's just age, but if the RSA asks for election-
I, I understand where you're going, Councilor Woods, Lon, um-
I tried to read, I tried to-
It, it's similar to the planning board. The planning board-
I'm shaking my head, 'cause I disagree with you, but I want you to sit, finish what you were saying, sorry.
A planning bo- uh, not planning board, sorry. The lib- the library trustees. It's similar to the library trustees, where we elect library trustees, we don't vote on the alternates. We only vote on the trustees, and then the library trustees appoint alternates to the board. It's similar to that, where you vote on the members, and then the town council would appoint the, the alternates.
And why?
Well, the, not-
And why does that read down to the council?
We are the appointing authority.
Yes, based on the charter and, um, based on RSA.
The RSA is worded, "The board may recommend to the appointing authority," which would be the town council, "the names of no more than two persons who may serve as alternate members on the board. The alternate members shall be appointed to one-year terms."
So if something happens to a trustee, and they're no longer able to complete their term, that alternate would fill in, or do we still appoint?
Until such time as we would appoint a replacement, I guess.
Because remember, it's only one-year terms for alternates.
Right, but, but-
Right.
For instance, if we had an alternate with Mr. Balcom, if, when Mr. Balcom passed, that alternate would still have to be appointed to the remainder of his term by this board, town council.
And then an election would ha-
Then, then the election would go, would happen, then the election would happen during the regular election.
At the end of the term.
At the end of the term. The election would happen if, if he was, like, with Mr. Balcom, he was a two-year, so that you would appoint that alternate for the two-year period.
Or you could appoint somebody else, it wouldn't have to be one of the alternates.
It doesn't have to be the, that alternate. But that's, they don't automatically get that position, is what I'm saying. You would have to appoint that person.
For the balance of the, but I mean, yeah. Lon?
Yeah, at one point in my life, I promised I'd never do this, but let me try it. Um, if we-
As long as it's legal.
If we put in the, beginning with the quotes, "Further, the town council may appoint, uh, alternate members to fill vacancies that occur uh, until the vote by the ensuing town meeting."
But they, they could be voting if someone's absent. It's not only if it's-
Thank you.
It would be, in that case, it would be like the planning board, where, um, if a, if a, a regular member of the planning board is out, or the zoning board, the, the chair says, I, you are taking X, Y, Z seat, and now you're a voting member of the, of the-
Of that discussion.
Of this dis-
That's why I promised myself I wouldn't get into it.
Did you have something you were gonna add?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
No, I'd like to make a motion, though, so we can get this-
That'd be great.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how to do it. Move to amend the charter to add the following sentence to the description of the membership. No.
If, if I may?
Please.
The, the motion would be, uh, the town council to follow the proper procedure to begin the process in amending the town charter to allow for two alternates for the trustee of trust funds.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
We have to have a public hearing, and we have to get the ball rolling quickly.
I get you. So that's what I, I was thinking, the process.
Yeah, it's a process, it's a process.
You were reading my mind.
Yeah.
So moved.
Moved by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Nancy Murphy, to, uh-
I did not think of that, but you're absolutely right.
I have to rephrase it?
It is a process.
To-
No, he already read it.
He already read it, okay.
To begin the process.
Getting the process, amending the charter.
Thank you.
Further description you've written in your memo, or?
That's what we would bring forward.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's what we'd bring forward at the, uh, for the, for the charter change meeting-
Oh, okay.
And the public hearing, and then, at that time, you could have a discussion of whether you wanna change the language or not.
Perfect, okay, perfect.
So is this considered the first reading?
It's not an ordinance, it's, this is considering whether or not you wanna put it on. The reason why I, I brought it forward, this meeting, is because we are on a really tight timeline. Because after, we have the public hearing, and the town council decides that, yea, yea or nay, if they vote yea, then we have so many days to get it to Diane, Diane has so many days to get it up to the Secretary of State, the A.G., and D.R.A. for them to approve it, on a timeline.
And they need forty-five clear days before the election, or something like that, for that approval, or, or some silly-
Some silly thing like that, so that we can get it.
So we have to get it.
Very good.
But this is not the first reading, then, no?
Right, no, it's just a public hearing, this required, I get it.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, the-
This is just a discussion with the council to say that-
To make the proposal, instead of waiting for a, a, uh, petition.
Yes.
We're, we're being the petition, to get it started.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes six-zero-zero. Now, we'll go back to, um, the discussion of retreat goals update. And this was brought forward by Paul McCauley to update us on our, on our condition, our situation since our retreat last June fourth, yes, and our goal sessions.
So, the council here, Healy, gave us a nice plan of what was discussed, and I took that plan and I just updated it. Um, years past, always in December timeframe, which is usually around the six-month mark, just to see where we are with the goals and see where the council is, see if anything has changed in, in the, in thinkings and things of that sort. So, um, basically, the, the first- So, basically, the, the first page, and I apologize for not having this PowerPoint presentation, but things, things in my office got a little sideways this week, so I didn't have time to do a PowerPoint, and I apologize to the people, and I apologize to the town council. The first one, the first five topics basically talk about, when we were talking, we were still underneath pandemic and, and shutdown, and we weren't having public meetings, and we were wearing masks in town hall and things of that sort. So, in-person meetings and, instead of virtual meetings, that occurred. We all went back to in-person meetings this summer of 2021. The goal has been completed. Wearing masks, as of June 14th, 2021, the council voted that you do not have to wear a m- you do not, you, you recommend, strongly recommend wearing a mask if you're unvaccinated, but you don't have to wear a mask if, if you're vaccinated in town hall. We had basically these seats out here, we had 11 numbers for people, those have been removed, and that was also in June. Reopening of John O'Leary happened this summer of 2021, and I do have to say, and I believe Nancy can back me up, is that the seniors love that that building is open and they can have their meetings, and they can go on their bus trips and, and things of that sort.
I was gonna wait till later, but this may be the appropriate moment. And I'm not recommending this, in fact, I not recommend it. Are there any discussions that are going to occur tonight or soon related to any change in our COVID procedure as it relates to the new variant? Because the senior center is worried about it. So, I think if, if we make a statement tonight that we foresee no, at present, no changes in the procedure, then that will follow through over there. Is that accurate?
There, there's nothing on the radar at this point.
Okay, great.
And we've been following the state guidelines?
And the state guidelines have not changed either.
Have not changed.
Okay, thank you.
So.
But you're right, they've been thrilled.
Remind them to be safe.
Yeah, I mean, right.
Social distance, wear a mask if you're, you know, if you, if you feel that, you know, you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. Those kinds of deals, they're optional. You know, social distance, if you would like, you know, things of that sort.
But there's no six-day-hom.
Yeah, if you're sick, sniffling, even if you think it's just bad sinuses or allergies or a cold, please do not come to work, or please don't go to the senior center, kind of deals. And just basic common knowledge and common courtesy.
Extra caution, yeah.
The next one was signs, to me, made of a state's mask, and, and that was also done on, on the 14th. And you, you see those as you come in, they're big green, they basically say that, you know, masks are not mandatory, but recommended.
Yep.
The next topic was an electronic message board. You asked me to obtain pricing. We did get pricing from our vendor, the vendor cost is about $16,000 for one of those boards.
How many do we have now?
We have two. And then we have three electronic message boards. Police, DPW, library, they're all electronic message boards. Plus, we have those two that move around, that we can move all over town.
Two mobile.
To mobile ones that we can move around. An additional mobile one would cost about $16,000. They, there's a lot of, there was a lot of talk about determining a location, if we do buy a third board, or how do we get the southwest corner of town? Because really, that's the only part of town that we don't have a lot of coverage. That and the northeast part of town by Bedford, we don't have any boards out that way, but we can usually put a message board at the station that's along DW over by the new Gilbert Crossings. The bigger problem with the southwest corner, which is Continental Boulevard going out towards 101A, is that after Industrial Drive, that is state, oh, that's a state road, and they are very particular about putting mobile signs. They have to be so many feet off the road, things of that sort. The water district is out that way, and I haven't approached the subject with them, but knowing that the cost was $16,000 and we'd only use it maybe two or three times a year, I was hoping that maybe I could broach a subject with them, saying, hey, look, if we need to put a mobile sign out here, can we put it on your property? Which is on actually the other side of Industrial, which the town, the town has those right-of-ways in that corner over there. So, but that's where I was thinking of, of going with getting some kind of messaging out there with, if, if necessary, if we deem, if the council deems necessary. But I do think the $16,000 cost for a message board is a little bit high. And the other reason why we got the other two message boards were because we were able to roll them into 80/20 construction projects. And the state paid 80% of them, and we were only paying 20% of $3,200, so it was more reasonable at that time. So, at this time, I cannot make a recommendation to purchase one. Research, Facebook page, we talked about that tonight, so that's completed tonight. The volunteers, that has started, October 2020, we began the process. The first show was taped on November 19th, which was a great job, I heard, by Nancy. Please, 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 councilors, if you have your committees and boards, please make an appointment with Nick so we can get this program up and running like we wanted to do in January, February, well, now will be the February timeframe.
It's really important that the chair and vice chair do, because they have to kick it off.
We were done on October 20th.
Sure you were.
It says right here.
It says it right here, yeah.
No, you started the process, you didn't do your, you didn't do your-
No, it says date completed.
Yeah, you started the process.
They completed thinking about it.
But we're still thinking about it.
Oh, gosh, that's the most-
To be honest with you, let me make a suggestion to the, it literally took us 40 minutes to do it. If, in fact, there is a statement that you start and finish with, which Nick will give you, and I literally had three or four questions that was it. But what I found to make a big difference is if we met, like, a week before, literally 45 minutes, went over it, and they had plenty of time because they know they were limited on time, and it really was very smooth. I'm the one who took up the most time because they kept on flubbing up the- and I'm gonna put in for a teleprompter, because you know what you want to say, and as soon as you start looking at the camera, you know, you know.
See, I'm not good at this at all, I'm not, not even remotely looking forward to it.
And I, you know.
You're in front of a camera every one of these meetings.
But it's different, it's a very- Hi, thank you for, I sure will-
Oh, yeah. Well, get yourself interviewed by MUR or something, they've got camera right there in your face.
You know, and, and really, when, and Nick was helping us, saying, now, remember, you're not talking to the whole community. When you see the camera, think you're talking to an individual. So, I wanted to put a little face, anything that would help me. But you're right, it's a very, you know, artificial kind of thing. And I'm talking to you guys, I'm not talking to the camera. If there were a person there. Anyway, just to let you know, it really does make a difference if you spend just a short amount of time. And it doesn't take long at all.
We're working on that. Volunteers needed, you asked if it could be vacancies in the public. There is a section, I posted that, that's what it looks like, the volunteers needed is on the website, and that links right to all the boards and committees with vacancies and who has what position. Agricultural Commission was the next topic, kind of looking to RSA's. We didn't really have to do too much there because the Agricultural Commission came in on the 28th of October and asked to be disbanded, the council has done that. Reorganizing the merger with Parks and Rec, that'll be coming forward in a January meeting with the council. To complete presentation spots with Merrimack TV on budget, capital reserve fund, property assessments. Budget is coming in January, and we'll do one right after that, capital reserves will be along the same time. Property assessments, we did the revale, and today we taped another show talking about tax rates. The tax rate and how to file for an abatement, as well as other exemptions such as veteran, blind, elderly. We did a show, so that will be airing in the next month or so. Coronavirus virus fiscal recovery, we came before the council on the 15th to talk about how we could spend the money, and the council awarded some, using some of that money to wastewater. Solid waste, talked about it tonight. Chestnut Hill Development, research ordinance regarding this development to be done. Derelict properties, that's on the radar to be done, just since they just got a new fire chief. We've given him a little bit of time to breathe, and then that'll be given to him to do. Staffing, police fire needs, staffing levels, we approved the SAFER grant. Additional staff will be discussed during the budget process beginning next meeting. Town clerks, same thing. Merrimack TV, same thing. Considering a conservation officer, and that will be discussed during the budget as well. Maripay, we're still working on the maripay with, that, I have to bring forward a proposal to, and get help with Nancy and Andy account to, to get that proposal done. So, a lot of the goals we're working on or have been completed, about 50/50 right now, which is pretty, pretty consistent with years past, that by December, about 50% of the goals will be completed. So, any questions?
Benley?
Um, Paul, can you remind me on the derelict properties, what were we talking about?
Yeah. You wanna take that one, Nancy? I can do it. Basically, it's, it's properties that are rundown, that are, look abandoned, that, you know, one, one property in particular, years ago, right by King Cone, the roof, there was a hole in the roof. It was abandoned, over here, there was a, there was a hole in the roof of this house over here, it looked like it was abandoned. Because we didn't have permission by the homeowner to come in on their property. We can't condemn the property. The only time we can condemn a property is if we, we can look at it and go in there and say, okay, the water's dripping on the electric panel, this property is condemned. What the Paul, derelict prop, uh, thing is, is, would make it easier for us if we see a big hole in the roof to say, hey, look, you gotta get that hole fixed or the property is condemned. When we went, another one would be over there by the, the, on DW Highway down the other end of town near Bedford. There was that property that we condemned, but we went on the property, we got invited into the property, and that's how we could condemn it. Looking at a street, we saw that it might have needed to be condemned, but we were never invited on the property, but once we were invited on the property, we could do it. The derelict property meant, the thing would be so that if we do see things like that, that it would give more to building and health to be able to condemn a property.
Okay, but except for the fact, I feel terrible for those people, for whatever the reason might be that they've allowed it to get to that disrepair, why would I otherwise care, I guess?
Because the neighbors. It brings down values in, in neighborhoods.
But that seems like a civil action as opposed to us dealing with it in a fashion-
Well, I'm the one who initiated this.
We, we can talk about it later, I'm just curious.
No, no, all I'm saying is, we just, I, my interest was, is there such a thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there towns that have it, and what are the policies? It may go nowhere. It was literally just a search for, are there any options? Is there something reasonable? Are there any RSA's that they, the thing is, there's no information, so I made a request that at least the search be done, and, and so we could have a discussion. That's all.
It's kind of, I completely, I couldn't remember it at all, that's why it provoked my interest.
Does it sound familiar now?
A, a little bit it does, yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry. Sorry to line, I know he's getting answered over here.
Line your own line.
So are we. Okay. Thanks, so if there's no more discussion on the retreat goals update, thank you for that. Paul?
Yeah, that was what I'm-
That, that completes our agenda and brings us to minutes. We have minutes from November 4th, 2021.
So moved as presented.
Moved by Lon Woods as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Nancy Murphy to accept the minutes of November 4th. Does anybody have any other additions, corrections, changes?
Correction.
Or thoughts, yes?
On page, page seven and eight. Mr. Drouin's name is incorrectly spelled. It's D-R-O-U-I-N.
D-R-O-U-I-N.
Correct, and it's on line 44, 46, 49. On page eight, on line four.
Just anywhere, his name is, they'll make the change.
23, 25, I think it is.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I saw.
Anybody else? Page three, line 17, it says, "Miss Cowser, then, then shared." I think we can delete one of those thens. Line 17 on page three. Okay. Any other changes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote to accept the minutes with corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 600. Which brings us to comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. Anybody have any comments they want to make at this point? Everything's going fine on your committees? Thank you very mu- huh?
Terrific.
Terrific, awesome. Except when Barbara decides she's gonna go out of town. Have, have a good sale.
Thank you.
Which brings us to the end of the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Barbara, seconded by Lon. By Nancy, by Nancy. I thought you nodded at me, so. Motion to adjourn by Barbara, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 600, thank you very much. Good night, Merrimack.